All right, so we got a finance subcommittee meeting. And our first order of business is review of invoices for the fiscal year 2020-2021. In the amount of eight ninety-two, I'm sorry, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Questions or discussion?
No.
I have a question, Jack.
Go ahead.
Somebody was telling me that there's school days when we're short buses, and there have a one bus doing two routes. But I don't see any adjustment to the bill from the bus company. I was wondering if any of that's true.
The buses were, the buses, the bills from the bus company were adjusted multiple times before I presented them to you guys for payment, as they were charging us for way more buses than we were having and for more hours than we had. That's why they're being paid, two of them, right now, instead of one being paid last month and one being paid this month.
But those two bills are exactly the same, and I don't, I don't see how that's possible.
They're not exactly the same.
They're not?
No.
If you look at the number of buses, the only thing that's different is the number of days, and that's because it's two separate months. If you look at the number of buses, they're exactly the same, and I don't see how that's possible.
The number of, hang on a second. The number of days are this, are different, the number of buses are the same. Because we have less buses than we normally do. We're not paying for all the buses we normally pay for.
I know, but do you get what I'm saying?
Tom, are you looking, are you looking for information on which day which buses were combined?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, if that's true, that there's days when we don't get all our buses, those bills can't be the same, it's not possible. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And the number of buses is the same for two months.
They were originally billing us for four more buses, which I argued with and got them to change.
I know, but do you get what I'm saying?
I do.
Well.
I don't ride the buses every morning, so I can't actually tell you if that's true or not.
Somebody in our employ should be telling us exactly how many buses are being used every day, and that's what we should be paying for, and that's pretty simple.
Somebody, can you say that again?
Somebody in our employ should know exactly how many buses we're getting every day, and that's what we should be paying for.
Yes, so I, I do believe that they did combine some buses due to not having a lot of students on the bus and shortage of drivers, and so there are four less buses currently doing routes than originally scheduled at the start.
That's not what I'm saying, and I'm saying on any given day, there's a different number of buses on the road, so the two bills can't be the same. Do you, you get that?
Okay.
Right?
So, I'm, I'm not clear, because if we're, if we're run, if we're supposed to have twenty-five buses doing routes every day, but combined two of those routes.
Yeah.
Then that, you know, reduces it by two buses.
Right.
And if combined, you know, four of the routes, it, it reduces it by four buses.
Right.
So.
But if you reduce it, two buses today and four buses tomorrow, and one bus on Thursday, there is no way that bill can be the same. And from what I understand, is the number of buses is getting controlled by the number of drivers that show up for work.
Okay, well, you can put a hold on the payment, and I can get a, a listing of the exact buses that we're running on every single day, if you'd like.
It's not what I'd like, it's like, we have a contract that goes by the number of buses, and we shouldn't be paying for the number of buses that we use.
Shouldn't that be available in the bus attendance spreadsheet?
Yes, yes. So, I do know that they combined routes and they combined buses, and instead of running, you know, twenty-six buses, they're running twenty-two buses. But I, I can get the verification every single day, moving forward, of which buses are running. I do know they can't combine all, all of the routes or change them every single day, but they have combined runs.
From what I understand, is they change them every day by who shows up for work. I could be wrong, I don't work there, like Lynn said, I don't work there.
If I'm going to interject, even if they do, you know, change it, if somebody doesn't show up, they're still doing the same number of routes, they may be using one bus, but the same number of routes are being done, just by one individual instead of two or three.
So what's the contract? Is the contract for the number of routes or for the number of buses?
It's actually, I believe we pay hourly.
We do.
For bus.
That's not true. That's not true.
Okay.
Well, that's easy to see if we just pull up the bus contract.
The bus contract was originally divided, taken an annual amount and divided by ten. We were, we were being overcharged when I, I came up with the spreadsheet that you see in, in the payables, so that we're now charged by the bus, by the hour. So there's a six-hour bus, a six-and-a-half-hour bus, an eight-hour bus, and a ten-and-a-half-hour bus, which we're not running this year.
Okay, I have the contract, the addendum, I got the addendum here.
Can I just let all panelists know that you can now activate your video? Sorry for that.
And how? How do you do that?
Yeah, it says hours, it says invoice hours.
I don't know, if you look at the invoice from the bus company, it has the buses broken down into different categories, there's a six-and-a-half-hour bus, there's a five-hour bus, there's a ten-and-a-half-hour bus, and they allot a certain number of buses to each one of those categories. But that's not my point. My point is, there's no way for sixty days, we had the same number of bus.
It, it does say if the number of routes is reduced by five percent, but we're not looking at, then both parties renegotiate, but we're not looking at a change to the number of routes, correct, it's to the number of buses.
All right, so how, how we gonna, let's, let's, let's move on, so how are we gonna settle this? Tom, what do you need?
I don't need anything, but somebody ought to look through the mustbill and figure out what's going on.
Do you want me to send you the contract?
I don't need the contract, why, do I need it?
No, well, I thought you were wondering how we were billed.
No, I'm not wondering, because I saw the bills today, I know exactly how we're billed.
I think Tom just wants to make sure that the bill reflects the actual number of buses that are running, regardless of whether they're a six-hour or six-and-a-half-hour bus.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is.
I will need you to clarify.
There's no way that the same number of buses have been running for two months, that bill, there's no way that bill can be right.
Well, no, Tom, if we look at the bus spreadsheet, it shows that they're not the same running every day.
Well, there you go. We're paying for the same every day. There you go, you answered your own question.
Well, I think I answered your question.
So what we need to do is, we need to find out how many buses per day are running, and make sure that if they're running less buses on a particular day, then we shouldn't be being, I think what Tom is saying, then we shouldn't be being charged the same amount of money.
Yeah, it shows that November 2nd, two less than usual, November 4th, one less, November 5th, one less, November, I mean, November 9th, November 12th, November 13th, 16th, and 17th, one less bus, but if we're going backwards, actually, the same amount of buses ran from September 21st through October 28th, so for that whole month, the same amount of buses did run.
Shell, are you looking at the bus transportation spreadsheet?
Yes. I am. And it looks like it's different for whether it's JMMAS, high school, Ferrara, that was at the high school, all buses ran from the September 22nd through October 28th, all buses ran. If we go to JMMAS, we go to September 21st, say, from the 22nd, one bus did not run for two, for three days, no, actually, correct, that's two buses, actually, one bus did not run for the entire month. Bus 12 did not run for the, from September 29th till November 4th.
That might have been one of the routes that we combined.
Well, it just started, it started running again on the 4th, with sixteen kids. Because the day that it didn't run, the days that it didn't run, there was actually twenty-seven kids on bus 24.
So, let me take a look at that spreadsheet tomorrow, and we'll reevaluate the, the invoice.
Yeah.
We can pull off the invoices tonight. Lynn, will you just do a quick subtraction of that?
Yep. Do you want to not pay them both, or one of them?
Let's pull them both off, just so that we have accurate details, and we can compare it to our attendance tracking for buses.
Okay.
I, I got a question on page nine, just somebody explained to me, Connecticut Behavioral Health for over fourteen thousand dollars?
So, special ed costs.
That's, okay. All right. So that's transportation also?
Page nine, you said?
Page nine, Connecticut Behavioral Health, fourteen thousand, eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
No, that's behavioral health services.
Okay.
That's some special ed services for one of the students that's outplaced.
That's a monthly, that's a monthly?
Not, it's, it's for a behavior technician, which is, this is a group that we use to bring in individuals who have advanced behavioral training, to work one-on-one with students in district.
Okay.
That's the district, I'm sorry.
So that, that's not a, a set monthly fee, that's depending on what services we use, or are used by them, right?
I think we currently have a couple of contracted behavioral technicians in district right now.
Okay.
Working with individual students.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, let's move on to review of POs over seven thousand. Questions, concerns?
I'm good on that, Jack.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna move on then to the review of budget transfers. I didn't see those in my iPad. I couldn't find them. Okay, so Lynn, were there budget transfers that we need to discuss?
They were sent over to, I think they were added late.
Okay, oh, I just found them, just found them.
Okay.
All right, while Tommy's looking at that, let's move on, and then we'll come back to that.
Oh, good, Jack.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Ferrara awning bid.
We had bids of, quite a few companies came, and I would recommend New Haven awning, they're the ones that have done all the other awnings in the district, and they were the best price.
Do we have any idea why there was such a disparity? Isn't this the one that went from nine thousand to like thirty-seven thousand?
I think some, some of them were, were making an addition to the building, I honestly do, it's just an awning.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was kind of crazy.
Just, I mean to interrupt you, Jack, I'd asked the same question, and you, Lynn, fill me in too, because it was such a discrepancy, and it was such a big, the range was pretty large.
Yeah, yeah, all right. That'll take us to the Tuttle Roof bid.
The Tuttle Roof bid, we had quite a few people come out, and the Weather Technologies Incorporated had the best pricing, which was eleven thousand, nine eighty, seventy. The next closest was Shoreline Restoration.
Okay.
Now, are these, are these guaranteed, or are they temporary repairs, or is there a guarantee as to how long the repair will last?
There are guarantees with, with all of them, it's basically redoing at least half of the, the square footage of that piece of the roof. It's over the gym at Tuttle, up on the top, it has flashings that are completely separated, it, I think when it was originally done, it wasn't done well. I, I'm, I'm just thinking, it was just put up with the rubber membrane has completely come apart from the wall, and there's a gap, maybe two feet, so when you walk across it, the rubber membrane bounces up and down. I was up there for the, for the demonstration, for everybody to see what we were doing, and I was, I was amazed at how the roof moved.
Do we have a history with the company, the little bid company?
Yes, we do. They have, they have done many of the repairs around district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that moves us on to number two, health insurance report.
We continue to be moving along very well this year, it looks like our, our claims have not gone crazy, we are in line to keep us where we need to be, and this month, I added the KeyBank reserve account, so that you could see the interest we're earning, so that you'll know exactly where we stand, and on our reserve balance, to add to the bank balance.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Are we gonna go? All right, we're gonna move on, update and discussion on the East Haven High School Venmo request proposal.
The Library Media Center teacher Juliet Goriab and Haley Lutar, one of the English teachers, are creating a small business school store, Makerspace Capstone, that will get the children, the students, point five credits, and point five credits for meeting times. Within this, they would like the kids to create and maintain record-keeping for their supplies, costs, and profits, will maintain the machinery, conduct inventory, create marketing strategies, and online print and video content, and for this, they're requesting that we make a separate account for them to keep all proceeds, using Venmo, like many other businesses do, they'd like to be able to have people just order and pay for everything without having to come into the building, so they could also have an online presence.
Okay, my, my only question on this is, I, I read through that thing, and I saw the items that they're going to be offering, and my que, my question is, what about the Yellow Jacket Club? Is this good, does this interfere with what, I mean, I don't know if they still do it, but that's the way the Yellow Jacket Club made most of their money when I was involved, by selling t-shirts and sweatshirts, and all the other, you know, sweatpants and every other kind of apparel. So I, I mean, is this a conflict between the two groups?
I, I honestly don't think so, because these, these are, they're gonna be doing things in their Makerspace and making all kinds of items for sale, not just sweatshirts or t-shirts. They were thinking of making magnets and signs, and, and you, you have all seen what they do with those really cool printers, that they make the three-dimensional things, so they are planning to do all kinds of things in, in league with the school store, they're gonna use the Buzz Stop, the school store.
Yeah.
And just sell everything through there.
And, Jack, they were originally in the, in the Buzz Stop, selling sweatpants and some sweatshirts and t-shirts and stuff.
Okay. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to see the Yellow Jacket Club all of a sudden find no opportunity, but I, I don't even know if they're selling anything anyway, because we used to do it at the events, and there hasn't been many events, so, you know, like football games and such, so.
And I think what happens is, is Anthony, the athletic director, also sets up online stores for each one of the sports seasons, where parents go online and order apparel directly from there.
Okay.
I don't know if that's in conjunction with the Yellow Jackets Club, but it's in addition to all of this as well.
Okay, thank you, you've answered my question. Any other questions regarding the Venmo? If not, I'll move on to the asset disposal, I think this is something we started talking about last month, or last meeting.
Yes, I have Randall here to talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Randall.
So we are requesting the disposal of approximately one thousand two hundred Lenovo X131E Chromebooks. In the past, we've disposed of technology assets through recycling firms that did not compensate us, other than picking things up at a loading dock, and I've got to tell you that when we get rid of something, it is, it is time to go, we've already scavenged it for parts, we've already made the, the best use we can of that device for as long as we can, and most of the approximately twelve hundred Chromebooks have been scavenged for parts, all have been stripped of their Google management license, which was then reused for other devices, and these are first-generation Chromebooks, they're all over six years old, they have marginal battery capacity, and unable to run this smarter balanced assessment, which is really the big reason why we took them out of service, we've removed them from service, and I don't feel they're suitable for donation. Computer Systems Asset Disposal LLC of Rochester, New York, has offered to pick up the Chromebooks and resell them on consignment, and this is a new venture for us, no one, no one has ever offered us anything for assets. They estimate that we could receive between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars for the devices. Personally, I think this is very optimistic, given their condition, it is a, you know, it's a consignment, it is not an outright sale.
Okay, I, I think the big question last time was, you know, we're, we're gonna put out these two hundred Chromebooks, and then, you know, in a couple months, we look on eBay and find out they're being sold all over the country, and, and I guess we were basically told that they're so old that that wouldn't be happening, is, is that the case, or?
I, I can't guarantee that they wouldn't be resold, the reality is, you can buy a new, brand-new Chromebook for a hundred and sixty-five dollars today, why, why anyone would choose to purchase these used is, is beyond me, but they may have some value in consignment, I, I would imagine their value lies in either parts, or, or the metal inside, precious metal.
Okay, I just have one more question, I think I have one of those Chromebooks, is you gonna take mine away?
We, we will provide you what, what you need to, to work effectively.
All right, thank you. Tom, are you satisfied?
Yeah, I mean, that's great, we're actually gonna get some, in form, the last meeting, I was getting the feel, we were getting nothing for them.
Well, we, we, we may not get anything, it is a consignment basis, if someone chooses to purchase them, obviously, we'll receive the consignment, I, I think anything would be a bonus.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, then that brings us to three, any other business that might rightfully come before this subcommittee? Anybody got anything else?
I do, Jack, if that's okay.
Yes.
We've included an MOU for the secretaries bargaining unit, similar to the teachers in, in negotiating the contract, the component about the one percent cost share reduction for keeping up to date with your wellness checks, and in alignment with the wellness program, is included in the new contract, given the delay in negotiations and the start of the school year, we are asking the board's consideration in approving the MOU, where it extends the deadline to meet all of the wellness criteria from December 30th to March 30th, so pushing it back a couple months, similar to what we did for the teachers, to allow secretaries to have additional time to make their appointments, and meet all the wellness criteria for the one percent reduction of their cost share.
Okay.
So the MOA is drafted similar to the teachers, and it just adds language where, for this first year, we extend the deadline to March 31st, 2021.
Okay.
When does the one percent take effect?
It'll take effect July 1, 2021.
Till right now, they're not paying it?
No.
Okay.
But, but per the, the program, they're supposed to have all their wellness checks done by December 30th, given the current climate, it's kind of difficult to do, so we'd like to give them the extension, and then they would have met the criteria for the one percent reduction beginning July 1, 2021.
Okay. Erica, I had a que, I had a question from a, I believe it was, I'm not sure enough, was it Para or an assistant teacher, but, but something about their pay, and then they got additional funds, and then the funds were taken away, do you know anything about this, or Lynn, do you know what I'm talking about?
No, but can you have that person reach out to us?
Okay, I can try, yeah, I guess they were, they were given additional monies in, in like, two pay periods or something, and then they were told that, that it was, it wasn't supposed to have been that, and they, they, they had to take the money out for the next two pay periods, or something like that.
Have them reach out to us, so we can help resolve that or put clarification to it.
All right, I will do that.
Thank you. I have another thing, I, I would like to call upon Randall again, and I'd like to, to have him discuss a little bit about our, our fiber contract, and the renewal of that contract.
Sure, thank you. So the, the, the contract is with Crown Castle Fiber, and Crown Castle is formerly known as FiberTech, and I think I've presented to this board several times on our relationship with FiberTech and renewing contracts, and the proposal is for a five-year term, starting July 1st, 2021. It is for dark fiber, which is unlimited bandwidth that connects each of our buildings, and the fiber network is used to move internet traffic, as well as HVAC information, video surveillance, telephone information, basically any data stream from one building to another. And the proposal must be accepted before receipt of the Universal Service Funds next fiscal year. And the proposal represents a decrease in the cost from the existing contract, and the existing contract is ten thousand four hundred eighty-three thirty-three per month, and the new contract is eight thousand four hundred dollars per month. And just as a frame of reference, we put these services to bid in 2016, and the only other bidder was Frontier Communications at twenty thousand four hundred per month. And as we have in the past, we should receive an E-rate discount of at least eighty-five percent, currently, we're at a ninety percent E-rate discount, that'll reduce our portion of the bill to one thousand two hundred sixty dollars per month. And we've been very happy with Crown Castle, we've logged two service calls in ten years, which is pretty remarkable, and each have been a result of a downed tree in a weather-related storm, and they've been very quick to respond and get the service back up.
Erica, you're good?
I'm good, so thank you, Randall, I think our relationship with FiberTech- I'm good. So thank you, Randall. Um, I think our relationship with Fiber Tech is really great and we have to enter into, uh, a renewal and we do have, um, a renewal contract there for, um, I'm sorry, was it a three, it was a five-year period?
Five year, yes.
Five year at $8,400 per year.
Is that on the agenda this evening?
It, it is not. It is not. We added it under any other discussion. We can certainly bring it back for consideration. But certainly we want to make sure that we have this in place and our contract all situated and ready to renew, um, next year.
Is it, it's not time sensitive then?
No, but I, let me look at the, I think the renewal was good for 30 days. This, this option for renewal. And we can always, I mean, we can always put it out to bid again. But, you know, we currently have a really great contract. This was a fi, an opportunity to lock it in for five years at $8,400 per year. And so we just need to share it with the board in terms
30 days expire?
Consideration, I think. Just make sure.
$8,400 per month?
June 30. And Mr. Hennessy, you're correct. Yes, it is $8,400 a month.
$8,400 per month. My apologies.
That is, that is pre the USF discount.
And we have to give the renewal by when?
To comply with the Universal Service filing, um, I, I would like to give renewal in January.
Okay.
But, but I hate bringing things to the board saying you, you must do this tonight or, or we risk our USF scenario. So you've asked me to bring it earlier and that's what I'm doing.
That's what I was getting at. So we would put this out and we would put it on for approval at the next meeting. Okay.
And then just just one final thing. Um, there is a cost proposal in, um, your board packet for an audio upgrade for the gymnasium at East Haven High School. And as part of our, um, Corona relief funds, being able to appropriately communicate with students in that space who are gathering in the morning there, um, as well as, um, eating lunch socially distanced. And in an effort to communicate effectively in there clearly and audibly, uh, we do have a gym audio upgrade proposal that could be supported out of Corona relief funds. Randall, I'll talk, I'll let you talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. And, and we have in, in the past, say 10 years, looked at solutions for the high school gymnasium, uh, audio system on a number of occasions. And it is a very, very large space. And the idea is to try and create something that is loud enough and intelligible enough to be heard while the, the room is occupied and in use during an athletic event. I, I think we've had a series of proposals. The last one is from H.B. Communications. That, that consists of replacing loudspeaker clusters, amplifiers, Bluetooth connections so that pre-game music can be played, uh, two wireless microphones and a mixer. I think it's a comprehensive and responsible solution to that space.
I agree that that is a, um, large space. And I think that's why initially it was referred to as a field house as opposed to, uh, gymnasium. So, all right.
And this is for a discussion on tonight's agenda or just a preview for next?
Um, it's, it's a discussion. It is going to be paid for out of, uh, grant funds, but if we want to, access those funds and get this project started, we would welcome adding it to the agenda to be able to, to start and complete the project.
Okay. Right. That, that's fine. I think just going forward would be great to have things just a few days in advance of the meetings. So everybody would feel really comfortable on, uh, voting on something such as this. But, uh, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just think that just might be good practice.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then, then we'll end this finance subcommittee and move on.
Um, opening up Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee this evening. Um, I overheard, well, I came in on you guys talking obviously about the, uh, some of the, uh, the matters here regarding, uh, the first would be under Buildings and Grounds would be the Ferrari owning vendor. Lynn and I had discussed this in length and you guys just went over, um, the three bids, bids in companies that are bidding. We have worked with New Haven before and I have no problem with them. I did speak of the, the gap that Jack talked about, how it is so significant. And I did talk to Lynn about my concerns and, um, you did answer me Lynn about how additional things on their side that they planned on putting into that price. So I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with New Haven owning company. Does anyone else have anything additional that they felt about the bids? No.
No.
Second one would be the tunnel roof repair vendor. Um, again, three bids were out. Um, again, Lynn discussed it for WTI. They have workers before. Again, I have no problem with them. I spoke about how Greenwoods was so significantly, you know, high and, um, just probably where the company is, the area, what their line is and so forth. But, um, I'm fine with, uh, WTI. Anyone have anything, any concerns about those four bids? Sorry, I said three. Any questions? No. Um, okay. Um, number two, um, for Buildings and Grounds. The next three, which would be the East Haven visitor bleacher bids, East Haven baseball softball backstop bid and the field fencing. I think Anthony might be on now. Um, he's looking for, looking to speak to you about some money. So I don't know if you want to jump in, yeah?
How you doing? Um, we were wondering if it'd be possible to get the board's blessing to go out to bid for those three items. Uh, the three items are the away bleachers, the backstop of baseball and softball, two separate bids, one to repair, one to fix and elevate the height about 10 feet in each section. And then the third bid would be for a security fence that would run from the beginning of the football field all the way across past baseball, softball to the entrance of the cross-country trail. This way on off-hours, weekends, people could not use the field. And, you know, possibly get injured or cause litigation.
And remember I spoke to you about that. We had discussed this before. I think this is a wonderful, wonderful, um, idea and opportunity because we do have concerns about people coming in and out. And obviously it comes down to overall safety and security. So that's great.
And like I say, we're not, I'm not necessarily asking for an acceptance, just permission to go out to bid. So the board can look at the numbers and, and prioritize and, and see what their thoughts are.
Anthony, this, this fencing is, um, not the same as what we were talking about a gate or something last time, right? You're talking about an addition, uh, fencing basically running along the driveway up to the school, correct?
Yes, sir. It would be in between the walkway, the sidewalk and the trees running the entire perimeter.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone know how we would pay for this?
So originally, Tom, we tried to include, include this in the DAS Alliance Grant Funding for repairs and maintenance and, um, enhanced safety features around athletic fields, playgrounds and schools. That potent, that project for the field fencing, uh, was kicked back from the state and they asked us to complete, um, a, a revision on that. We'd like to go out to bid just to see what types of, you know, prices we have and if, you know, the board is inclined to support the use of the rental fund or, um, the operational fund based on the cost. Since
I'm sorry. One other thing we had was the, Mr. Hennessy, the football field is going to be coming in under budget. That money being left over, I, I would be inclined, if I could, to ask the town council and the mayor to maybe allow us to allocate that for some of the storm damage relief and, and the situations that we're talking about repairing.
Again, this is just a request to go out to bid.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. I was gonna, um, bring that up for, um, number five. Erica, do we have any wiggle room left in that grant?
No, we, um, we wrote a revision, uh, based on their input. We had to take out the high school field fencing and the Ferrari playground. Um, and we rewrote it into paving, um, for Deer Run Elementary School. So those, the, the max on that grant was, um, completed based on the original projects we included. And the Deer Run paving, you replace the field fencing as well as the, um, Ferrari playground with.
So is, is this also going to be asked to added, to be added to the regular agenda? Big going to three different bid items?
These are just discussions and just letting the board know that we're going to go out to bid for these, uh, three things.
We don't need to approve that.
So are you asking about the, the, the ones you just spoke about? Are you talking about the additional things she just spoke regarding the, the, the DAS grant?
No, not the DAS grant, what he just spoke about, the bleachers, the fence.
That's on the agenda, hon.
The regular agenda?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. It's, um, it's something I'm reading to you now.
No, it's on the subcommittee agenda. It's not on the regular agenda for approval. We're just notifying you that those are some projects, especially the baseball softball backstops, um, because they won't be able to play on the fields unless those are, are fixed and/or replaced. So just, this is just a discussion on letting the board know we're going to go out to bid for these items. Obviously, when the bids come back in, we'll bring them to a regular board of ed meeting where the board will have an opportunity to select the, a vendor and, um, a potential funding source.
No, that, that's fine. I just wanted to know if we were adding anything else.
Yeah, no, I, I think the confusion was that, um, Mr. Verderam initially said ask for approval for, you know, from the board to do it, but rather than that, you're not really asking for approval. You're just letting us know it's going out to bid and I thank you for that.
Okay.
And Mr. Stacy, you're correct. My apologies on that.
Yeah, but that, that would, it's, I think the way it was, it's fine. Instead of the updates and discussion, I think that was fine. Thank you, Anthony. Erica, you just spoke, um, about the DS Alliance Grant and what we're asking for at this time. And you said there's no wiggle room. So is there anything else you'd like to add regarding that?
Regarding the DAS Alliance Grant?
Well, it's on my bullet point and I'm just asking, we spoke about, is there anything that I'm missing?
No, I just wanted to let the, the board know. I, I think I had shared that the, uh, high school fencing and the were not approved items. So we pulled those projects. We wrote a revision and just included paving at Deer Run based on the suggestion of the state and we resubmitted that grant this week.
I appreciate it. I didn't, I didn't expect you to go over it again. That's what I was asking. I just didn't know if there's anything else, but thank you very much. Um, the last bullet point was air duct system cleaning maintenance. And I had brought this up just due to some concerns we had regarding some of the, the vents at a few of the schools. And I had some questions that I investigated a little bit myself. Um, I'm not sure if, um, Benny or, um, or Lance is on, but, um, the company is the, um, air duct diagnostics. I questioned, do we have a maintenance? Are they there on a regular basis due to some, some, I guess, some black that was coming out of the vents. And then we received some pictures from some parents that were concerned. And I also concur that it's a concerning thing. But what happens is when they blow it out, the, and I mean, I guess it would work for anyone's home or business that have vents. When it's blown out, that's what happens. And then the staff will, is and has been going around doing full sweeps and cleaning each and every vent. So I have no concerns anymore at this time. Um, I don't know if Lance or, or, uh, Benny are on here? No? Okay. Well, they were gonna add something additional about actually, you know, when it actually is gonna.
Lee, you still with us?
Okay, closing out the subcommittee meeting. Thank you, guys.
I, I just have one question, if I may interject. Somebody had asked about the, the visitor bleachers. And, you know, if they're being put out to bid, they actually had a really good idea of putting them on wheels that can be portable so they can actually be used for other events if something comes up. If that's possible, I don't even know how much or if a increased cost would be with that.
For, for the bleachers, the size we're discussing, that it wouldn't be possible. Also, the way the bleachers are located and locked in, uh, there's really no way to articulate them. You couldn't pivot them and bring them the other way because there's the light stanchions for the, uh, the poles, for the, the lights. I'd be more than happy if you'd like to take a walkthrough and we could look at that. It's definitely a possibility to explore for other areas. But for this one, we're going to need something that's definitely concreted down into the earth.
On a pad.
On a pad.
Tom, that's a great, that's a great question. So much actually asked me and I, the, many, many, Anthony went through with that all with me. Size would be like, you know, that would be an issue too. Never mind it having to be locked in. I just, they're just large. So I didn't think it'd be something we'd be able to move around. I just want to add one more thing because I did see the, um, the repair to our, um, home bleachers. It's just fine. I had some concerns. It was going, do we have enough money to repair and them coming out the way they wanted to? And it regarding safety and everything is up to par and the, the bleachers look great. So thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Hey, Lisa, I, I just, Lisa, I just noticed that, um, there was something regarding chillers on your agenda. Did you have something? Did you skip that by accident? Agenda, right after the bleacher repairs, home bleacher repairs, it said East Haven High School chillers. I don't know if there was information you wanted to get out.
Guys, am I not seeing it right? I don't have it on my agenda.
It's not.
It's not there? Okay.
Yeah, it's listed on the sub, subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
I'm looking right at it, guys. That's not on my subcommittee. Where are you taking this?
I'm looking at it too. I have a printed copy though, so I don't know if you added it last minute. Last thing I see is air duct system cleaning.
Same here. Yeah, but go up. I see it. I see it. Um, it's one, two.
It's probably on the live. I mean, it's on the hard copy though. So.
Yes, I have it right here. East Haven High School chillers.
Okay, I don't, on my hard copy, so.
Hard copy too.
All right. Not a problem.
I'm sorry, Jack. I did, I would have definitely looked into it. Um, uh, do you have an update Lynn on anything with the chillers?
The PRV actuators in the chiller, uh, I think it's chiller number one have gone and need to be replaced. So I got some initial quotes and they were over 7,000. So I'd like to put it out to bid.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, obviously it's not going to cause any problem right now. Um, okay. Thank you very much Lynn. Do you want to get that to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
A call to order this evening's meeting for Tuesday, November 17th. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Melissa, could you put the flag up, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask for roll call attendance, please.
Okay. Tia De Palma.
Here.
Jennifer De Longo. Lisa Geraci Anastasio.
Here.
Tom Hennessy.
Here.
Tom Murtaugh.
Here.
Marian Pellegrino.
Here.
Erica Santiago.
Here.
Jack Stacy.
Here.
And Michelle De Lucia.
Here. So, um, to begin this evening, I just want to remind everyone before they speak to address themselves, just in case somebody's listening and cannot see you. I mean, introduce yourself. And just like this, going forward. And just like to say, going forward, that you pretty much know by now, the decision has been made in conjunction with the VAERS Public Health Announcement that sent a few weeks ago that, as well as guidance from East Shore Health, that we'll not be holding any more in-person meetings due to the advisement of not holding unnecessary gatherings. So we will be using Zoom. Also, the superintendent will be holding a panel discussion with the East Shore Health, our district physician, our head school nurse, the Fairhaven Health Clinic on Thursday, November 19th at 7:00 PM. Parents are encouraged to participate in this forum by submitting their questions no later than noon tomorrow, Wednesday, November 18th. The link to do so could be found on the flyer that was sent to all families yesterday morning. And I'd just like to say that the district's current decision is remain full in person with the option for full remote access to live instruction for all families who choose. I am aware of the pressure on the administration staff and BOE members for staying this course. And I apologize for the additional stress, but I also thank you for all that you do in the best interest of the students. Please keep in mind that we have all been exposed to trauma due to COVID-19 pandemic. I had the opportunity to attend a webinar about a week ago with Yale University in Cave. And we know that when faced with trauma such as this, everyone does experience a sense of psychological stress. And it's human nature for this to manifest into lashing out and the need to blame to help establish a sense of control for their focus of fear and sometimes even anger. I ask that we all remain empathetic and understanding and patient. On that note, I want to address the stress our staff and students, both remote and those attending in person, experience every day. In fact, I worry that burnout may be unavoidable as a result of this being such a fluid situation, which could only inevitably lead to the loss of motivation and morale for educators and learners. I'm hoping that we may add an agenda item this evening to discuss possible ways we may able to may be able to support our students and staff as a district, considering the many factors. So I do ask that we do that at the end of the meeting, and I will make that motion. And that's all I have for this evening. Correspondence?
Sorry, mute malfunction. I have no correspondence.
See, subcommittees.
I don't have any updates.
Tia.
Yeah, sorry, Tia De Palma. I have no updates right now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Michelle, for bringing up the the panel on Thursday at 7:00 PM. It's, parents can submit their questions in advance via form. I believe a communication went out district-wide and it's posted on our website. We're going to look at those questions and sort of rank them with the most frequently asked and then compile those questions for our panelists, which will consist of our district physician, Dr. Ricchio, our director of people services, Bob Swan, Dr. O'Field, who is the chief medical doctor for Fairhaven Community Health Center, Mike Passacilla from East Shore Health District, and our lead nurse, Betty Davis, Betty Davies in East Haven. And so we'll collect all the questions, we'll organize them, and we'll allow panelists to answer those questions on behalf of their knowledge and expertise. So that's Thursday at 7:00 PM. Submit your questions in advance. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Jennifer Murray, who has a few additional guests, Principal Cortella and Randall, who's going to provide an update on the district's capacity and readiness to engage in a fully remote model if necessary. Jennifer?
Thank you so much. And I would just ask that our Melissa, if you could make me a co-host so that I would be enabled to share my screen. I do have some information that I'd like to bring to our community and our board this evening.
Well, do you give me one second?
Thank you. So I I'm I'm here to speak a little bit about how the district has been working, not just in the in the advent of the pandemic, but over the past few years to make sure that we're prepared to pivot regardless of any event that would, you know, require us to use flexible instructions. So I'm going to share with you a brief slideshow that reviews some of the things that we've done that enable us to have a flexible learning environment. We're allowing our students to teach and learn virtually. At this time, as the board chair has stated, we are really relying heavily on the advice of the local health department and and the State Department of Public Health and given some guidance on community spread, not necessarily school widespread. Are, at this time, continuing to provide students the option to learn remotely and the students to be able to livestream at a flexible, in a flexible way to allow them to quarantine and do all of those things. But at this time, we are, I'm going to prepare to share with you what we are equipped should the requirement be to move into a more virtual model. So this is by the numbers. Since the start of the school year, we have done a lot of work and our tech services really should be commended, and I think Randall's on the call. Our tech services team has deployed 116 livestream setups with an iPad and a Bluetooth headset and a microphone, working on accessibility features to make a device that teachers are familiar with using. They didn't have to learn. Some districts have opted for very complicated swivel cameras. But we found that our teachers have a lot on their plates and learning to use a new piece of equipment. We wanted to have something that, you know, if folks have a phone and they're familiar with that interface, this might have been. And people were very, very supportive and giving us feedback on what worked and what didn't. So I'd like to thank those individuals for that. Our family assistant, so Julie Church and our Family and Community Engagement Office does field phone calls on a regular basis to provide student supports and family supports that they need. We're averaging about 12 calls a day, just for everything you can think of to support our families. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Those things include Wi-Fi hotspots. So if you're a family or if you know a family who is having difficulty connecting to the internet, please call us right away. We have internet service vouchers or Wi-Fi hotspots available for deployment that we can arrange to get to you and your family if your children are having any difficulty accessing the internet and and remote learning. Since September, I I did receive data that tech services has closed 908 service calls since the beginning of the year. So they're working to help families connect and log into their devices and connect to their accounts and things of that nature. And to date, we've deployed one-on-one devices for all of our enrolled students in K-12. And so that's a big lift for for all of those members of the team. And I'd just like to thank them for all of that and for the families who've advocated for their children so we can provide with what we have available for you. So folks have asked, what are the percentages looking like? And if you recall back in the early days when we were talking about our reopening plan, we had data indicating that about a quarter of families had planned to start the year off as remote learners. And as you can see, the data has shifted slightly, but not terribly. It's all within, you know, the the 20s, anywhere from 17% to to 29% is the highest at East Haven Academy. So we do have students that have opted to learn remotely and parents have really been good advocates and reached out to myself, principals. And we appreciate that partnership so we can improve the experience. But I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board and the community that we sort of remain within, you know, the 20s, the 20 percentage points of people that are that are learning remotely in most schools. And so I just wanted to share that with you. And I also wanted to sort of start by saying, none of this would be possible without a tremendously flexible, innovative faculty and staff. I mean, this dedication and support has been, and their ideas and feedback where we're bumping up against, you know, concerns or supporting families. Their their, you know, ideas and support has been instrumental. And Michelle, you did mention, you know, the the emotional and and exhaustion that can come along with living through a global pandemic. And so I just, I don't think there's enough that I could possibly do to thank our faculty and staff for the dedication that they've shown to our kids in East Haven. And I think, and I thank the board for your, for commending and them and mentioning that as well. So for those of you, again, as a parent, I have three kids who are distance learning. I also understand it feels like you're juggling. And so we can provide you in our district supports, navigating this global pandemic, making sure you're, you know, are we feeding lunch? I mean, you you are, are you getting their physical needs met? We do offer still the meal services, but there's other supports that you can reach out to. Your child's school counselor, connecting to social workers or our school-based health center. Or like, as I mentioned previously, Julie Church, our Family and Community Engagement Coordinator, can help you get access to Wi-Fi. If something that you need isn't on the list, there's a likelihood that we can connect you to someone who may be able to help. And sometimes that's just a listening ear. So I know there's a lot of people who are struggling right now. We just want to connect your child to learning in school. The biggest barrier to virtual deployment and virtual learning is students who's, for whatever reason, are not best suited or able to engage in learning online. Sometimes it's worrying about being seen on the camera, whatever it is, let us help you and your child so we can get them connected to school. We just want to see them. So at this time, talking about connecting students to virtual learning, I invite Laura Cortella to share some of her. So she, we are expecting that some schools, based on various quarantine needs, may end up flexibly pivoting into various formats. So I invite Laura Cortella to join us, I believe she's on the line, and talk a little bit about the experience that she's had at Deer Run recently.
Okay, thank you for inviting me. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. So we were in a really unique situation at Deer Run. We were faced last week with not enough staff to safely staff the building due to quarantining either staff, paraprofessionals, social worker, school psychologist, or support staff. So last Tuesday, right before Veterans Day, we had our last in-person day. Wednesday was Veterans Day, and we quickly pivoted on Thursday to a full remote model. So we already had 46 students that were learning full remote. They were all assigned to a homeroom class. And we had 218 students also assigned to those homeroom classes. On Thursday, teachers began their regular live streaming schedule without missing a beat. So if it was time for reading, all of the students logged on for reading. The same thing for writing and math, some morning meetings and some touch bases with kids. One of the things that we noticed compared to March is children had an easier time switching on to Google Classroom. They had practiced on their Chromebooks. So we have children as young as three years old at Deer Run who are carrying their Chromebook back and forth to school and learning how to navigate Google Classroom with an adult support. We have students participating in their morning circle over the computer. Again, our three-year-olds with some parent facilitation or adult facilitation. But again, parts of their school day routine remain uninterrupted by being able to provide those on Thursday. We understand that some families are not able to be with us live. Families found out on Wednesday that they needed to find childcare for Thursday. So we also have learning activities that are linked directly with the curriculum that are available for students. So students are able to either access a live instruction plus the activities linked to the curriculum or the activities linked to the curriculum, again, with some touch bases with the classroom teacher as well. We have a large number of specialized programs at Deer Run. Those services were delivered starting on Thursday. We have speech and language therapy sessions set up. We have OT, we have PT, our special education teachers. So doing whole group and small group or one-on-one. And just a little bit back to that navigation, students logged on to their Chromebooks using what's called a quick card. So they flash the card right in front of the camera on the screen. They had picture directions in order to be able to get on. And one of our big goals is to have 100% of students engaged. So we have families that are sometimes coming to the parking lot to learn how to use the device. And we're teaching families and grandparents or parents how to log on to the Chromebook alongside their children. We also have an application called Go Guardian where teachers are able, on the district-issued Chromebooks, are able to take over the screen of the Chromebook to teach families how to use the applications. And at any point, if a family runs into difficulty, they can just call Deer Run. We have support staff that can explain it in Spanish or in English or if they want it face-to-face and they come out over to the parking lots. We have a lot of different supports, but a really large team that is making it possible. So I didn't know if there was any questions about what we're doing currently at Deer Run with returning in person on Monday, November 30th.
I don't have a question, Jen. I just want to commend you. I think that it's amazing. We have so many families, especially some of the the older individuals that do a lot of childcare, whether it be grandparents, and they had some struggles at the beginning of how they were going to be able to assist their grandchild or just the child that they care for. So this is wonderful. I think it's, I've gotten a few calls and I'm very, very proud and grateful. I think it's wonderful. So just commending you.
Laura and Laura's been, her team has been instrumental, so many, and our technology team, really, I can't thank.
Randall too. I'm sorry, everyone. I apologize.
Absolutely. No, no worries. I do have a few more items to sort of review because we do have a large district and lots of different buckets. So our Deer Run has that experience. I wanted to share notes from the field of what it is like. But I also wanted to share with you, this is this deployed iPad setup. This is Mrs. Lindsay Wright at East Haven High School. And so Randall, as you can see, has procured stands so that the student that, you know, sometimes in some districts, I know they're placing, you know, different equipment around. We wanted a stand that would be at sort of eye level, that the teacher's voice could be seen and students could, you know, be, it would be user-friendly for the teacher. So that's just a visual of what it looks like. And I love the I Love Lucy poster, so that's a nice addition to that. But I just wanted you to have a visual of what that looks like. So those are, we've deployed 116. And at this time, I understand, maybe Randall, if you're on the call, we have a large number that has, we may have a shipping date on. But we had placed the order. And again, there is some supply chain. We're waiting for some some orders. Randall, do you have a?
We have an additional 300 iPads that shipped October 29th. And I was assured by all parties involved that we would have received them by the end of last week. So this is, this is the world of of COVID logistics. We will, we will deploy them as as soon as we receive them.
And for those teachers waiting, I, let me know. I'll send you a cookie or something and say thank you for for your patience. We we do know that many teachers are using additional Chromebooks. They've all received either an extra Chromebook so that you don't have to manage using your own device to set up the smart board as well as stream at the same time. So we wanted them to have duplicate devices. And again, thank you for those teachers for their patience as we wait. So I wanted to let you know a little bit about our digital tool. So there are some different things that we're using, and we use all this language in in tech world and in in school world. What we have is things like courseware. So courseware is like a digital textbook. This includes anything where our platforms, like Savis Realize, Reveal Math, and I'll talk a little bit about those when we talk about six to 12. K through eight is using Envision Mathematics. And there's a Savis Realize platform. Edgenuity is also a platform that allows teachers to assign courseware. And the unique thing about that is it has the ability to translate for students in multiple languages. So teachers can assign the content flexibly or even at, you know, as a review in a new language to help English learners support a deeper understanding of content to pre-teach something that may be coming up. We also have something called personalized learning software. So those are things that sort of diagnose, use diagnostic assessment. So that means like the kid sits in front of the computer and the computer program gets to know what kind of reader and what kind of mathematician that student is. And then that time students can spend to, you really poke at the things that are the students' individual learning needs. I can tell you from experience as a mother, my son was very motivated to use our, the Lexia or SuccessMaker programs. We have SuccessMaker, Power Up in grade six through 11 mostly are used. Lexia Core 5 in K, K5, as well as SuccessMaker. And some programs are using IXL as well in special education. Google Classroom, you've heard a lot about, is kind of where a lot of this stuff lives. And so that's. And so that's a learning management system where students can find all of their assignments. And if it's of interest families, I do have a little cheat, um, sheet screencast on our district website that shows you like, how do you find the missing assignments that your, you know, kid didn't do? How do you find the calendar of assignments that your kids need? So you can access that. I think it was sent out in one of the remote learner updates, but I have that archived on the website as well. And if you need any of the stuff I'm referring to, please don't hesitate to contact me. So our team has sort of wanted to give you a sense of synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. As, as Laura mentioned, some families can join us live and some people may not be able to do so. But we do think that synchronous learning is in real time, same time, same place, right? So we are in virtual classes and the purpose of those times are, just like any school, classroom community, classroom community building and content-specific discourse. So we do ask kids to try to talk to each other, keep their cameras on, engage. And we try to make it really engaging for students by asking really specific questions or using online sticky notes or tools like Jamboard where kids can sort of type notes to each other. Um, and that helps with focus, making connections with focus, making connections while exploring content together. Cause that's one of the pieces when we do have full remote, um, they miss each, especially at certain grade levels, they miss those social cues. And at first our kids are resistant. They don't, it's weird and how do I talk? And they get a little nervous. So it's, as a parent, you know, encourage your child that everybody else feels it's weird too. And it is hard and sort of empathize and, and, you know, and that's a really, that's a really big thing that our teachers have been doing with our kids. And so we appreciate that. There's also asynchronous activities. So some of them are self-paced. So the use of personalized learning software, assignments of Lexia or Success Maker, discussion boards. Hey, after class today, go online and, and do this, um, activity on Jamboard. Um, we also have supplemental tests. So they might ta- tasks, like a newsela article that's related to the content that they've just learned about. Um, they're focused on the day's learning target and they give families some flexible options. If the student has any barrier to joining live, they can post, reflect, and comment. But still, we're trying to hold up to high academic standards, which require students to think critically and reflect on texts and content. And so we really are asking that, um, you know, they, they connect those ideas throughout the days with each other. We did also have the benefit this year of, uh, adding a Sora platform. Um, this actually allows students to access a ton of high-quality digital texts. They can define, highlight, and annotate to help them read and understand what they're reading. So it was great. We can actually order copies of a novel if we're for some reason remote and we are starting a new unit and we need kids to have access to those materials. Um, and it provides personalization options. So students who have any disability, um, they are, you know, able to, you know, enlarge the text and, and, and use some, some accessibility tools as well. Our kids continue to use tools like Membean, which is a vocabulary development, uh, personalized learning software. They're using digital collaboration tools, Google Docs and Grammarly, um, again, those interventions that we talked about. And Envision Math, there are some, uh, ways that students can shift between classroom and remote learning. And so they can help, um, you know, the, the program work flexibly and pivot with any need. Um, we do have an assessment sharing tool. So we have had a very much success with, uh, I believe there was about, there was a very small percentage of remote learners who we were not able. We were, we administered assessments, um, our, our screeners, our beginning of the year assessments to all of our remote and in-person learners. I think there may have been some, some cases where due to illness, we were not able to connect. But for the most part, I would say the, a large percentage, I think there would maybe three students that we were not able to reach. But, you know, for a large district, that's, that's really exciting. Um, and our, our literacy and math coaches and those instructional leaders that really worked hard to do that. I think they did an amazing job and I just want to say thank you. Um, so there's, uh, in the high school level, there's a similar program, Reveal Math, which has online board versions of the textbook. So kids can access their core content, videos, materials as well. Um, and again, Alex is a similar sick nine through twelve, did personalized learning software and digital versions of textbooks. So, um, and, and, and things that students are using. So in science six through twelve, you know, one of the things that we're trying to mitigate is, you know, we know that when kids are leaning around a beaker or looking into a microscope, those are great learning experiences. But with COVID, we've had to really be flexible and our science department are, you know, live streaming all remote students and they've received PD on this technology tools to be used for those discussion and collaboration. So how do you do a virtual lab? How do you connect with students? Um, six, twelve science class, Google classrooms are all up and running and we have access to Foss materials online. Those, um, teachers are supplementing with demonstrations. Um, so that is, that is a barrier and we're exploring some options for virtual labs that allow manipulation of, you know, materials and, and, and variables in a science to recreate the phenomenon that they can observe, analyze, and construct explanations. So I just, I sort of want to say that we are really interested in hearing from you. And so many of our decisions have been based on a lot of the great feedback or even not-so-great feedback that we've gotten about our programming. And we want to hear from you. So be on a, be on the lookout. We will be sending a survey from your child's school. Um, we are asking that you fill out one per child because schools and programs vary and the needs of students in those grade levels and ages can vary. So we really want to get a clear picture of how our students and our schools are meeting the needs of COVID nineteen. Um, so we ask for your consideration in that manner. Um, attendees, now the board is going to have an opportunity, if you'd like to ask any questions, I would encourage attendees who are listening and have something that comes up, um, at this time, if you have any further questions about any of the material that you've seen, please reach out to your teacher, your main office at your child's school, as Mrs. Cretella mentioned, or the, um, departmental specific facilitator of, of a, a content area or myself. I'm always willing and, and able to answer and ask questions. And I do have some slides that I will, um, direct you to if anybody has any further, um, need for assistance with Google Classroom. But that I will share with you on our screencast if you join us on our website. All right? So at this time, does the board have any questions?
I do see a lot, there's tons of information there and I thank you for, for putting that out there. And I hope people do, um, you know, are able to call the right people and, and get answers to their questions. But, you know, always start with the teacher, always start and then move up, you know, if things aren't obviously getting, getting met.
Thank you.
Great. Um, anyone else have any questions, comments? Okay, then we're going to move on to approval of meeting minutes from the special board meeting on November second, twenty-twenty. Do I have a motion?
Erica Santiago, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the special board of education meeting.
Tia de Palma, I second.
Okay, Melissa, can you do a roll call vote?
Yep, uh, Tia de Palma.
Sorry, yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia.
Yeah.
Tom Hennessy.
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh.
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Yes.
Erica Santiago.
Yes.
Jack Stacy.
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia.
Yes. Motion carries. Approval, that brings us to approval of the consent agenda. We have approval of invoices for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents and approval of purchase orders over seven thousand. Do I have a motion?
The, the invoice should be four-hundred-and-five-thousand, forty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Oh, did that?
We took the Durham invoices off.
Okay, hang on. What is it? Okay, so four-hundred-thousand, five dollars, no, four-hundred-and-five-thousand, forty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Is that correct? Yes, okay. And purchase orders over seven thousand. Do I have a motion?
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I make a motion that we accept the consent, consent agenda as amended.
Erica Santiago, I second it.
All right, Melissa, can you do a roll call vote?
Okay, uh, Tia de Palma.
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia.
Yes.
Tom Hennessy.
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh.
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Yes.
Erica Santiago.
Yes.
Jack Stacy.
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia.
Yeah.
All in favor.
So this brings us to, um, our audience of citizens portion. Um, Melissa, do you want to call on, uh, members of the public in order?
Yes, so, sorry. Um, okay, so, uh, anyone who's attending the meeting, if you would like to speak, use the raise hand option. Um, and then I will go in order. So first is Thomas Jill Bride or Gil Bride. I'm going to allow you to talk now. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you? Um, I'm a little, I'm a little upset to think that we're sitting here in the stage we're in where, with the whole state and the whole nation of COVID and to think you guys aren't discussing a hybrid plan or anything of that nature to satisfy us just blows my mind. I can't understand how from June, the whole summer, you are public servants. You are not dictators. You are nothing less than elected people that work for the public. You have to take public opinion into consideration. Stop going to East Shore Health. I think it's a little ridiculous to think that the guy might, so at all costs, at what cost is he spending when you've got no flesh in the game? Please explain that to me. I would love some answers. And the fact that you tuck and hide behind cameras and have the audacity to say to me that it's safer for my daughter to go to school than for us to come to a, a board of education meeting. You can't line us six feet apart. You can't have times, but yet my daughter can go and sit in school and be quarantined for a week last week. Because some kid had COVID on October thirty-first, they didn't find out till the sun, two weeks later. And all of a sudden, my daughter's got to stay home for ten days. Now it's not fourteen, it's ten. So you guys just do whatever you want and we're just supposed to sit here and take it. And now you're going to hide behind the camera. I'm disgusted.
Sorry, forgot to unmute myself. Okay, the next person is Brett. Okay, go ahead Brett.
Hi, how's it going? I'm just like, sorry. I'd like to let you know that it's not psychological stress. It's the failure to do what's right by the teachers, the children, and staff of the schools. And I'd like Michelle DeLucia to step down and hand Lisa the gap. That's it.
Okay, um, next is Karen Putney. Just give me one moment to give you access. Um, okay, Karen, I have to allow, I have to promote you to a panelist and then I'll just remove your access after because it's not allowing me to let you talk currently. Okay, go ahead Karen.
Hey, everybody. So one thing I would really like everyone to consider and maybe look into a little bit is that every time we have a classroom or cohort that's being quarantined, it's because they've been determined probably by East Shore Health to have had a direct exposure. And that puts them at risk of also becoming COVID positive. I'm not sure why these students and classes aren't being tested before they return to school or they return to the community. The medical community is stating that children are much more frequently presenting with mild or absolutely no symptoms. This makes them asymptomatic carriers. Without testing, you can't say definitively that schools aren't a place for asymptomatic COVID spreads, which then in turn brings it back to the community and again increases our community spread. So children are continuing to shed the virus when they're asymptomatic. So I think that really needs to be something that's being considered by everyone making the decision to stay open.
I'm muted again. Sorry. Uh, Daniel Trickett Senior, I'm going to give you access now. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Our, my question is, is that if whatever factors do come into play that sways your guys' decision whether the kids are going to go full remote or whether they're going to stay in school, is that going to be on a district-wide basis? Or is that going to be done per school, looking at, you know, individual cases? I, I just don't see like if Dear Run or the academy happen to have, you know, X amount of cases, but Tuttle or Mamawwin don't, why should we be closing schools to, i- if it's not the same in, you know, the, all the schools in the district? That, that's all my question is.
Okay, um, next is H. Lester. Go ahead.
Uh, my question would be, if we're having a staff issue at Dear Run, what makes you think that the staff issue wouldn't continue in all the other schools? Um, clearly this is a problem, whether you feel it is spread in the school or spread in the community. It's definitely affecting the children and I'm just super concerned as to why, as board of education members, you would allow this to continue when you have full control to send the kids remote. In addition, I think that whoever the top is, Michelle DeLuca, the way, DeLucia, I apologize, the way you are handling this is absolutely absurd. Um, there is ways around this. All of the surrounding towns have been shut down besides Branford, which is only in school two days a week. So at this point, I would definitely ask for Michelle DeLucia's resignation as well as Erica Fortes.
Okay, um, is there anyone else who would like to speak? You can use the raise your hand option. Um, if not, that is everyone that I can see.
Um, Michelle, may, um, I say something. This is Tia de Palma.
Sure.
Um, I, I just want to register, I want to remind everybody that, um, you are welcome to your public opinion and whatnot, but, um, by, by our Board of Ed policy, it is stated and it is, um, clear that we really need people to be, um, not berating of any one person or anybody, um, on the board or on staff. And I would like everybody to please remember that, that this is an audience of citizens and that it is in our board policy and it does state it that we need to, um, not be negative and name people by name and say negative things as said here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, it's fine. I don't think they really understand how it works, that every board member has the absolute same position and control over every decision in this district. I just run a meeting and put together the agenda that is, consists of items asked for by board members. And in saying that, I'd also like to remind every family who has a concern, you have the option at any time to have your child to go full remote for live instruction. Okay, let's move on to new business. 7.1, discussion and possible action on the assistant teacher contract. Erica?
Yes, did you want to do a motion first or did you want to need to talk?
Tell maybe a little bit about
the teacher. A contract for a machine for, um, sorry. For an assistant teacher at, at Overbrook School. It is a replacement position. Standard contract for assistant teacher.
Okay, Tia De Palma, I'd like to make a motion to take action and accept the assistant teacher contract.
I'll second that, Jack Stacy.
Any questions or comments? Then at this time, Melissa, I'll ask you to do a roll call vote.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer De Longo, Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
And Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Melissa, that is a contract that I have to sign, correct?
Uh, yes, I will email you about that after.
All right, great. So we have discussion and possible action on the list of hires and rehires.
Yes, this also includes two high school stipends for senior class advisor and work-study coordinator.
Anyone need any clarification or do I have a motion?
It's Mary Ann Pellegrino, I make a motion that we accept the list of hires and rehires.
Tia De Palma, I second.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Melissa, roll call vote.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Um, next we have discussion and possible action on the Ferrari awning vendor.
Yes, so the recommendation is to go with New Haven Awning Company for $9,091.
Make a motion.
Jack Stacy, I'll make a motion to award the contract to New Haven Awning.
Erica Santiago, I second it.
Thank you, Jack, I guess.
Yep, it's okay.
Do you have any questions or comments? Other than what was already discussed in subcommittee? If not, at this time, I'm going to ask Melissa to do a roll call vote.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
One, no, my motion passes.
Great, that brings us to 7.4, discussion and possible action on the Tuttle Roof vendor.
So the recommendation is to go with WTI for $11,988.70.
I'll make a motion.
I'm seconded.
Thank you, Tom.
Motion to
award WTI to the Tuttle Roof repair.
Any questions or comments? All right, then I will ask Melissa to roll call vote on awarding the bid to WTI for the Tuttle Roof repair.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
Okay, one, no, motion carries.
Brings us to 7.5, discussion and possible action on the Department of Public Health guidance for winter sports. As we know, this morning, the CIAC has decided to postpone winter sports till after January 19th. Eric, I believe we do have a plan going forward though to keep some type of activity, is that correct? Or is Anthony still with us?
I'll turn it over to Anthony so he can explain to you where we currently are and how we'll operate until we get to the CIAC guidance.
So, we've successfully completed our fall season and thankfully, we've had zero COVID cases amongst any of the athletes. Now, we're following the CIAC protocol that was set forth and allowing our winter sports teams to condition. So the conditioning is non-contact based, it's lifting, running, things of that nature, no balls, no equipment. And we're limiting that to three days a week, 60 minutes per session. And we're going to continue that as long as we can. There's a couple of other things that we'll have to discuss down the road regarding co-op schools and
Anthony, can you just mention the size of the cohorts?
Yes, the cohorts are 10 athletes or less per coach, per session.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is going to be a very dynamic and fluid situation that we're going to be monitoring. We will make, you know, the best decision in the safety of our kids. And we will be revisiting this consistently to either increase the scope of their practicing abilities or to maintain, to decrease, to whatever we need to do to provide a safe environment for our kids. And at the same time, providing our kids with every possible opportunity to participate in athletics.
Anthony? I know everyone doesn't have the, um, the handout. Can you connect me? It's the second time I tried to talk. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Coming through now.
Yeah, I know that everyone doesn't have this handout, um, but I was just wanting, you can go over it a little bit. Oh, because, yeah. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, you're cutting in and out though, I'm sorry.
Melissa, were you able to?
I don't know if you guys could hear me when I had said Anthony, if you can hear me.
Can you hear me?
Okay. It, yes, sorry, I don't know. What, Michelle?
Melissa, can you pull up the document I think that you're talking about?
I don't know, can I, it says on there.
Thank you. Is that the chart that you for that agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, just give me one.
The table, Melissa, the reason I'm asking is because some of the parents
It was, I had Melissa upload that.
Yeah, I will, I'll share it now, give me one second. Want to make sure I have it up. Um, there's two of them, so I will
Yep, table one, table two.
So. Okay. Okay.
We might need table one first to show what the risks are.
Thank you, everyone, thank you very much, Melissa, Michelle, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would, can I, Michelle, may I say something, Tia De Palma?
You just muted yourself, Tia.
Sorry, um, I just want to just point out, and I think, you know, Andy, you can certainly, Verderam, explain this, but this is coming from the High School Association Sports Medicine Advisory Council. I just want to point out where this table's coming from, correct? Is that the same case with table two? I'm just asking.
Um, this chart, there's several out there, they're all similar. Um, I'm not familiar with this, I'm trying to read it, the Association of Sports. The two primary ones we're going off of is the National Federation of High School Coaches and the CIACs. However, these are up for debate and some of them, this is still fluent with some of them. Especially the lacrosse is up for debate, but, um, yes, this is the chart we are working off currently.
Yeah, I just wanted you to only just explain a little bit and thank you, only because people, a lot of parents are just confused. They don't know the levels as to where the risk lies and so forth, and what's more. I, I think that the they are pretty self-explanatory. They list the risks of, this is according, this is just one. This is one, one, um, piece of literature from one organization. I just wanted to make that clear.
Correct, and there's been
You did, Tia, I'm saying, actually, I seen three of them in the last week and they're all similar. I'm in many districts and they're all similar, I'm just stating that to follow, just to have an understanding, that's all I'm saying, stating, because parents do want to know, and this explains it. Tia, please, I don't want you to think I'm saying we need to follow it to a T because I'm not saying that, I don't think that we can. But I think that just to explain a little bit, I think is important, so, thank you, Anthony.
If you don't mind, there are mitigating strategies we can use to lower the risks, such as cheerleading and dance. If the young ladies are wearing a mask and they're not stunting, they're not touching, that lowers the level down to moderate. It's considered more of a sideline cheer and dance, and that is a risk reduction that is acceptable for us to still get the girls to practice and to go over some skills.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Um, you could see by the second table that we are allowed to do some indoor conditioning as Mr. Verderam explained, however, there will, I don't believe the board will be allowing any type of scrimmages or team practices, um, just conditioning. I think, and that's across the board, correct?
Yes, but this is again, this is a, this is a table, recommendations for the operation of interscholastic club, recreational, and other amateur sports activities. It is not coming out, this, this isn't from the health department, this isn't from Connecticut State Health Department. I just wanted to keep, I want to clarify that. Are we motioning whether or not we, we go through with these, um, groups and conditioning tonight or not? Tia, why was it in the, Tia, why was it in the package? Just for informational purposes, right?
Actually spent
One second, Michelle, one second, Michelle, one second, Tia, I'm asking you a question. Was it in the package just for informational purposes, right? That's all, that's all we're going with, we're not trying to Point of order, I, I, if this is discussion, I will discuss my, my opinion about the matter, but I don't know what you're asking me, Lisa, I don't understand. I'm just pointing out the fact. Three times, all I'm making a point is that it's an informational piece. We shared it, we're giving parents the knowledge that they're seeking. I have no problem, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I have absolutely no problem. I want parents to see that. I just want to make sure that I don't know what's wrong with my machine here.
This was, um, this was just information that was shared with all districts from Cape.
Yes.
So I thought the board should be able to see it as well as the district.
Yeah. But my question is, okay, this is my, am I muted? Okay, no, um. So discussion and possible action on the Department of Public Health, so what are we acting on?
Well, this, well, we didn't know what the CIAC was doing till about 10:30 this morning. So they made the decision, so honestly, we don't have to.
Correct, and Ms. De Lucia, Mr. Palma, if I may. Again, what the CIAC decided in the state of Connecticut was not to allow competition until January 19th. So within that window, I would like to recommend and suggest that our winter sports teams be allowed to condition, be allowed to practice in their cohorts, similar to we did in, in the summer.
Okay, so
So that would be the motion to
So that's my question, that's what, that was, that was all I was asking, if we're going to
Like to make a motion? Would someone make a motion?
I would, well, okay, you will ask for discussion.
Someone like to make a motion to allow conditioning for winter sports?
I'll make a motion to allow conditioning for winter sports.
Is there a second?
Jack Stacy, I'll second that.
All right, Melissa, you're gonna have to do a roll call vote.
No, we do need to discuss it now.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I, when we started the season, there was no, um, you know, the, the numbers were nearly not what they are in the general public. And, um, we had also made decisions to allow children who are remote to come to school to condition and whatnot. Um, so I, I was very hesitant in the fall and I'm, I definitely have great hesitation now because the schools are doing a great job. But you are adding, people ask, how come we can't have meetings? Why can't we allow? The more people, the more different cohorts that you allow to enter the building, the more chance of, you don't know, the more chances of spreading the virus and taking it back to other people who would be really harmed by it. So I, I really think that, um, in many school systems, they trace back, maybe not so far yet in, in East Haven. Um, but there are cases that go back when schools shut down and there's, there's a coach that has it, there's, there's um, other people that have to quarantine. Quarantining is, is really in the best interest and it's precautionary. Quarantining is the best defense that we have. And I believe that the sports and, and not everybody makes good decisions. Not everybody, not every coach is making good decisions. So I am being very open and honest and forthright with this. And I definitely would not vote to have this happen right now. Only because we are in the midst and our numbers throughout, we're in a, we're red, guys. We are red, so we don't need, we need to keep our schools as safe, as clean as possible because the transmission so far is not happening there. We need to give this time and get through and wait for the conditioning. I'm very sorry, but that's, that's just my opinion and, and I just really am thinking about the, the cohorts and allowing all these different groups to come into the building. If we're having children stay home, which is at the parent request and do remote learning, why are we allowing that, those children now to come and be part of the cohort? They need, you're introducing way too many groups and different cohorts now.
Maybe we're conditioning until after the holidays.
Yeah, that's what I think, so.
And, and Mr. Palma, I sincerely appreciate your feedback and I do share your hesitations. There, there is always a concern. I, I can assure you, we're doing everything humanly possible. As I stated before, we've had zero COVID positive cases for any athletics. The, the number of students from remote in high school coming in is very small. The, the student athletes have been amazing. Our coaches have absolutely been spectacular. The student athletes have been amazing. Our coaches have absolutely been spectacular. And I assure you, we're doing everything humanly possible we can to provide a safe environment for our kids. However, there is no sterile environment, and I do understand your concerns.
Right, but, but, I'm sorry, I keep thinking I'm muted. But, but I just need to just state that we're not, you know, that's why we're, there's not so many people coming to the building. Are the children staying after school, or they come back to the school? I don't under, you know, I'm not really sure how that works.
The only athletes and the students playing sports are our students who are in that building anyway. Like I said, the, the volume of remote students would be less than 10 for all fall sports combined. We are.
That's still introducing people that, you know, into the system. So it's okay. I mean, except for, you know, a vote, and we all can certainly vote, but I truly believe in the best interest, we need to get through this heavy, heavy season. If we go fully remote, you know, that could happen on a dime. We need to be ready for that and just, you know, all hands on deck. I think that there's a lot, a lot going on. And, and I feel for the kids. I feel for the, I understand. They want to condition, but we have to do really what's in the best, best interest here. And that's just adding one more piece to the puzzle that, in my opinion, is not really. And I don't, are we asking what the, you know, what Mike says, what, what the Health Department in, what they say? Maybe after Thursday, we can talk to the doc, you know, the doctor there and ask some more things, questions there. But that's all, I believe that we should not be voting on this. Perhaps maybe after we talk to the, have that panel on Thursday. That's my suggestion.
Can I say something? A contradiction. It's a contradiction to everything that we're doing every day regarding our children attending school. It's a contradiction.
No, but that's okay. You're welcome to your opinion.
Yeah.
Equally valuable, and we cannot make a decision without the majority of the vote. So yes, everyone should be able to share their opinion. Mary Ann?
I just ask Anthony, can he, can't he hold conditioning sessions remotely? My grandchildren are in a school system that is totally remote. The school closed. They have PE twice a week, and you should see them dancing around the den. And also, if they, if it's a nice day, running around the yard. The gym teacher actually live conducts for them, and they have a ball doing it. I don't know why you couldn't hold remote conditioning sessions.
It could be possible. It could be done. Again, things have been extraordinarily safe through the fall season, and that is a possibility. And what we are looking at is for our hockey team to do that virtual conditioning, but that's only based upon the fact that we have five other schools in the co-op. That's why we're doing the online for them. These kids that we have in our teams are our neighbors. If they're not going to be with us, they're going to be somewhere else. They're going to be in the local gyms. They're going to be playing on private leagues, private teams. There's not a vacuum that we live in. These kids are kids, and they're going to play. They're going to be around each other.
Well, we need everybody on deck, though. We need, we need.
Oh, I agree. And I can assure you, when they're with us, we have the utmost safety protocols.
Well, I, Anthony, I beg.
About everyone giving their opinion, I think that that's what we need to do. I'm Lisa.
Lisa.
Can you guys?
You keep interrupting.
At the same time?
I can't hear you, Michelle. Say that again.
If everyone could ask for the floor to speak, because you guys are all speaking at the same time.
I have no problem raising my hand and saying my name. That's the point I was making, that I'm trying to. And there's one person, and Tia, I don't want to get into with you back and forth. We always do this. I'm not looking to argue with you. My issue is that, oh, wow, you're live. Easy with.
Thank you, Mr. Aces and Mr. Palma. Tom, did you have something to ask?
No, I'd like to speak what I had to say, Michelle. You cut me off. You didn't cut her off. Let me speak. I'm agreeing with Anthony. My point is that these children are going to go other places. I saw so many children the other day just literally passing a ball on Main Street, right in between the nail salon and the, and the doctor's office in the middle of the street. I mean, you're going to have these children making their own somewhat of a cohort, and it's, is that safe? No, I think that if we can do it in an area, in an arena that's controlled, it's the safest way. And yes, that's my opinion. So everyone's entitled. Thank you for your time to let me speak, Michelle. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that if the kids are coming in and doing their training, and they're going to be in the small cohorts, if they're using the gym equipments and that sort of thing, I assume that they're going to be sanitized in between each use. If they're going to be wearing masks, you're going to do as much as you possibly can to prevent any transmission whatsoever. And if someone is found outside to be positive or anything, will those cohorts be dissolved?
Great questions. So what we're doing right now, even for our physical education classes, is we are utilizing the yoga rooms. We are utilizing the weight rooms. And the kids, we have a ton of wipes thanks to Lynn and All-American and our cleaning crew, Mr. Consiglio. It's, it's very safe. It's sprayed nightly with the hydrostatic guns that they have. And the kids take their own personal responsibility for it in the weight room. I go in there, I watch the kids before they use the barbell. They clean it off. They're wearing their masks at all times. If they need a mask break, they go right outside the door for a couple of minutes. They come back. The kids really will do whatever they need to do to be in that environment and to be with each other and to be exercising. And I can assure you, I've witnessed it firsthand, and they, the level to which our kids have risen to is, it's amazing to me. Even, I'm at total right now, and the kids, the compliance with the masks is unbelievable. They all follow, they do the right thing. And alluding to your second part of your, sorry, getting to the second part of your question, yes, if someone is positive, we handle the contact tracing the exact same way as the school. And if we get to the point where we find that's an issue, I definitely suggest we revisit this with the board. Like I said, this is very fluid. It's very dynamic. And Mr. Palma, I definitely, I share your concerns. I do. And I think that this is something that should be brought up on a weekly, bi-weekly basis for evaluation. And I just, I ask everyone to please allow us the opportunity to try. And if you feel that, that's a, that's a possibility, I give you my word that my coaches, my staff, my athletes will do whatever it takes to work together and provide a safe environment.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there anyone else who has not had a chance to speak? Jack?
Yes, I'd like. I just wanted to say, Tia, I totally agree with a lot of what you're saying, but if we're not going to allow these athletes to condition, then we might as well just cancel the winter sports, because we can't just go into winter sports without these kids having been prepared and ready to play. You know, my background right now is in youth sports and in youth hockey, and, you know, the rinks are taking care of things, you know, and I have full faith in Mr. Verderam and what he's about to do. But again, if we're not going to allow conditioning, let's just cancel the winter sports altogether.
Mr. Hennessy?
I may have missed something, but what did the Department of Health recommend for this?
Good point.
The Department of Health Guidance for Winter Sports. That's the agenda item. Did I miss that?
Nope, you did not.
And that's why I was confused.
Their guidance?
Yeah. I was very confused.
The local DPH, excuse me, has not provided any guidance. The local, the state DPH has provided an agreement with the CIAC and that chart that we have for high-risk, moderate, and low-risk. As long as we can keep things in the moderate risk section, we are allowed to participate. But again, this is something, Mr. Hennessy, that is fluid, that we will need to keep up to date with and discussing, because this Board of Education, along with our local DPH, is going to make the final decision. And whatever we decide, I am in complete supportive.
What is their guidance? You deny their guidance?
Their guidance on the Department of Public Health website, if you go there, it has these two charts on it.
Melissa, didn't you load?
Thank you.
These two charts are posted on the Department of Public Health website. They talk about the activities in tiers, from tier one being a small group conditioning and non-contact drills, all the way to tier five, which are out-of-state competitions. They have each one of the indoor and outdoor sports categorized by low-risk sports, moderate-risk sports, and high-risk sports. In each one of those categories, across each tier, they have it color-coded in yellow, green, or red. Red being not recommended, green being recommend allowing, and yellow being recommend allowing if appropriate modifications are feasible.
Correct.
So if we're just talking about this time period right now, from today, until when the CIC has postponed the start of a winter season, we're talking about tier one, which is small group conditioning and non-contact drills, and team, tier two, which is team practices and intra-squad scrimmages. Actually, Anthony, would tier two still apply here?
Yes, tier two would apply here, because.
Tier one and tier two.
Correct, it's tier.
For low-risk sports, for, for tier one and tier two indoors, it's recommended if appropriate modifications are feasible. Those modifications may include cohorting, breaking kids down into smaller groups, using different sections of the gym or different locations for training supervised by coaches and assistant coaches. It may include wearing masks. It may include things like kids having their own basketball or sanitation systems for the sharing of sports equipment. The same applies for moderate-risk sports. Indoor is recommended with appropriate modifications, if they're feasible. Outdoor is recommended allowing. For high-risk sports, only tier one is recommended indoor with appropriate modifications and outdoor allowing. However, team practices and intra-squad scrimmages are not recommended. So if you look at that short chart, it pretty, it lays it out pretty concretely relative to tier one and tier two, which are the activities our winter sports teams would be engaged in from now until the start of the season, should CIAC and the Department of Public Health allow for winter sports. I know that for fall sports, Anthony and Vindanazzo, myself, the superintendents from North Branford and Branford, as well as Mike from East Shore Health, had numerous conversations around the sports, around the mitigation strategies. We had to submit a portfolio of documentation relative to how we were going to check fans in, how many fans we were having, what the practices were before practice, after practice, this cleaning, the sanitation, the attendance-taking, the contact tracing, measures for health screenings. It was very, very extensive. So I think if you look at the Department of Public Health website and you look at that chart, what we were engaged in in the fall, if we replicate that for the winter, again, indoors with masks, with appropriate mitigation strategies, the chart tells us very specifically how we can proceed depending on the risk of the sport.
Thank you, Erica. And if members of you click on the agenda item, these charts will pop up and drive. I just did it. You probably can't see, but they're.
I have it. I have the chart.
Okay. All right. So at this time, are there any other comments or questions from board members? Otherwise, I'm going to ask for a motion, or actually, we have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
I, can I just jump in there with one more comment? I'm going to, I know of several sports teams that have led to quarantining. Maybe not here, but, and I think because of the higher risk, that's where my fear comes from. I just wanted to say that. I know that they, they have, it started to happen through the sports, the sports teams. They had to just end it all, end it all, even the conditioning. So that's all I'm saying. That's where my fear comes from. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
I have one more comment.
Please.
And in response to what Erica said, we are in a much higher level now than we were in the fall.
Yes.
A much higher level. And in the fall, Connecticut was the envy of the country. It was the best in the country.
No, Vermont.
Well, okay, close.
Yes, Vermont.
But, but now we're not. Now we're near the bottom. And we've got, it's not the same world anymore, here, around here.
Ms. Pellegrino, I agree with you. Things have changed significantly. And I am just, I'm asking for an opportunity to go to the tier one to tier two phase safely and to revisit this on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, however you see fit. But again, I respect your decision. I respect your opinions, and I'll take any advice given.
Michelle, Erica Santiago, can I actually make a comment?
Yes.
I just want to say, Anthony, I appreciate your hard work, and I know that the strategies that you put forward in the fall sports, they have paid off. And I do trust your, your work ethic for the winter sports. And I know that, you know, all the hard work that the athletes put into and, you know, just the groundwork that they lay out, you know, that doesn't, that, that doesn't go, that doesn't go away easy for these athletes. You know, that, the conditioning alone that they put in, you know, that, that takes a lot of work ethic. And, you know, these athletes, they, they put in a lot of work. So, you know, they, they want to work. They want to do this. A lot of athletes have reached out in this decision, and their parents have reached out, too. That's why a lot of them stay in school, because they, they want this decision to go through tonight. So, so I appreciate how cautious you're being and putting this forward. So, you know, I hope this does go through for them.
Ms. Santiago, thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor. Melissa, going forward for all other agenda items, we're going to do a roll call for questions and comments for board members, so we don't have the back and forth. Also, I want to remind board members, you're only allowed to speak twice on each agenda item. And you have a time limit, which cannot be combined or shared. So I think it'll just be a lot smoother. And again, this way you could actually say something that's well-constructed and helpful rather than thicker. So let's go ahead, and I'm going to go ahead and ask for a roll call vote on the motion to approve conditioning for winter sports.
Okay. Tia DePalma? Unfortunately, I'm going to say no with, with, and with the utmost respect, and I hope it's for safety concerns. And I'm sorry, but I have to say no. I'm sorry.
Lisa, Dracy, and Nastasio?
I am, I'm saying yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
No.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
You get Tom?
Yes.
Both times, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yes, but we will be revising, revisiting this at each board meeting going forward.
Okay, two knows, motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, so then we're going to go ahead.
Michelle, before you go ahead, could I just make a request? I'd like to make a request that the board send a congru- congratulatory note to the East Haven Girls Volleyball Team and coaches for an outstanding season and having made the finals. Unfortunately, they lost to Guilford, but they made an outstanding season, and they put pride back in East Haven with the girls volleyball team. So I'd like something to be sent to either Mr. Verderam or to the coaching staff of the girls volleyball team from the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Great idea, Jack. Thanks for letting us know.
Ms. Delucia, I'm sorry, if I may, and piggyback off that, we also had Nora Rome for our swim team, was the most valuable player in girl swimming, and Coach Jake Hackett received Coach of the Year Award for girls soccer.
Excellent. So why don't you guys share this in subcommittee reports? We're, we're along. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to 7.6, discussion and possible action on asset disposal. Discussion and Possible Action on Asset Disposal. As a discussion subcommittee?
Will Randall be speaking on that? Are you just going to get it over you, Michelle?
I thought Erica was- Erica, do you-
You're-
Little background on that?
Would you like Randall to provide a summary again on that?
Randall, please.
I'm sorry, I dropped my notes. We have approximately 1,200 first-generation Lenovo X131E Chromebooks that we'd like to dispose of. We have stripped them for parts. We have stripped them for license. And we have made arrangements. We have identified a company out of upstate New York that is interested in hosting them for consignment.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Melissa, roll call?
Tia De Palma? I don't- Did we make a motion?
No, we need to make a motion.
You didn't make a motion, Michelle.
Motion. And then we're going to roll call for question and comments.
How about this? Tia De Palma, I make a motion to take action so we can take care of the asset disposal of the Chromebooks.
Jack Stacy, I'll second that.
All right. So Melissa, roll call for questions and comments.
Tia De Palma?
No, none. Thank you.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know, Randall, you had spoken to us about it earlier about the consignment. And then Tom said- Hennessy had said he's happy we're going to be getting some money back. My question to you about consignment, just so everyone can understand, are you just going to- Obviously, we're going to have some kind of arrangement with them where we're going to- I don't even know what you said, the transaction. They have the actual devices. And if and when they sell it, we're going to get our money back. We're not getting anything right out the handoff, correct?
That is my understanding, yes. They would come, they would pay for transportation from the East Haven High School to their facility. And then we would receive funds if the devices were purchased.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Randall.
This is the first time we have had the possibility of receiving some money for recycled devices. In the past, we've disposed of technology assets through recycling firms that did not compensate us other than picking them up from the loading dock.
Jack, you had asked if we'd end up on like a site to sell. And I would agree, it's something you'd want to think about. But I don't even know if that's the likelihood, depending on how much they even sell. And I'm not even sure if we could turn around because you're right, brand new, they're at a low cost. So it would just be parked. So because we were- I received a couple of calls that some families said didn't have the means. And they asked if we were doing any kind of like donation. And I had said no. And you obviously tonight explained what we'll be doing as a district. So I hope we do receive some sort of, you know, turnaround money because every little bit helps. But thank you, Randall.
Tom Hennessy?
I don't think we should get rid of them without a minimum guarantee. I don't believe in this. Maybe we'll get something, maybe we won't.
We have an option to go other places, Randall?
Lisa, could you just wait?
Sorry, 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 Michelle, sorry.
We have a number of options to dispose of them with no compensation. We have this option to dispose of them with potential compensation. Those are the two options at the moment.
We shouldn't dispose of them without some kind of guaranteed minimum compensation.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Melissa, next.
Tom Murtaugh?
No questions. Everything was answered in your previous- talk about it, Randall.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Do we take them back if they're not sold?
I would not want them back. I don't think it would be appropriate to pay for shipping back.
Michelle, I just went out. I lost you. Did you say we get two opportunities per agenda item?
Sure. But who's next?
Erica Santiago? No questions. Thank you. Jack Stacy?
Yeah, Randall. I read through this document that we received in our packet. And honestly, I didn't read it as to- It sounded to me like they were going to buy these things. And then there was a guarantee of that the hard drives would be erased and that they talked about how the fact that they've never- information has never been leaked out and this kind of thing. So I'm a little confused from what I read, where I thought it said that there was an outright buy, that they were going to buy these things. They were going to pay for the pickup. And I didn't see that. Maybe I just misunderstood.
Some devices, they do purchase outright. And, you know, a traditional computer, when donating or recycling, you'd be concerned about ensuring the data is removed from that device. The Chromebook doesn't have any local data. And I think the potential value is so low, that's why they did not offer us an outright purchase.
Okay. So I get- What I was reading more or less was just a general outline of the company and what they did. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Okay. And Michelle De Lucia?
No, I think Randall was very thorough in his presentation earlier and all questions have been asked. Now I'm going to ask for a-
Michelle, I do have something else to ask. When Tom Hennessy had said, you know, you don't agree with it and you don't think we should do it unless we're going to get a return. If that was the case, and you may say, Lisa, no because of like information, but you're talking about wiping them out. If we choose not to get rid of them and go with this company, would it be an opportunity or even an option for we to do some kind of program where there are families that can use these devices? And if they're properly wiped, why wouldn't we, as a district, want to give back, so to speak? You know what I mean? If we're not going to get a return, maybe there's something like that we could do. I've gotten several calls from families that are in need of devices. So would that be an option? I mean, I might just be, you know, Christmas. I don't know, maybe I'm just over, you know, holiday feeling good kind of thing. But there's families looking for devices. So if we're not going to get a return, maybe we can do some kind of program where we can give back. Is that something-
I would not feel comfortable putting these in the hands of East Haven families. You know, they have been- They have been stripped for parts. And there is a reason they're out of service. They are non- They're, for the most part, non-functioning. And I think anyone using one of these devices would be extremely frustrated.
Okay, thank you very much, Randall. And thank you, Michelle.
If anyone doesn't have any other questions, I'm going to ask Melissa to do a roll call vote. Anyone else have any follow-up? No? Melissa?
Roll call, Tia De Palma?
Yes, dispose of them, is right. That's the request here.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes, reluctantly, but yes.
Tom Hennessy? Tom Hennessy?
Tom?
I'm sorry, I was frozen. No, I'm a no.
Okay. Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
One no, motion carries.
That brings us to 7.7, Discussion and Possible Action on the Venmo Request Proposal for the Capstone Project. Erica, any other info you want to provide?
No, just a summary. The school store maker teachers, as part of their small business school store for the Makerspace Capstone, are seeking a way to collect payment for items that they would be creating in the Makerspace for sale. They'd like to use Venmo as the system to do that. That would be organized and accounted for in our finance office.
Okay. Melissa, see, does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the Venmo Request Proposal.
Thank you, Tom.
Tia De Palma, second.
All right. At this time, Melissa, I'll ask you to roll call for questions or comments from board members.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
I believe this is working quite well in many areas. So I, you know, I think it's a good thing, actually.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
This is just for questions and comments, sorry. Okay, next. Tom Hennessy?
No questions, thank you.
Tom Murtaugh?
No questions.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
No questions.
Erica Santiago?
No questions, thank you.
Jack Stacy?
Yes, one question. I understand that the monies coming in are going to be used to repurchase more supplies. But in the end product, if there's a profit, where does that money go?
My assumption would be that it would be recycled back into the program to create new Makerspaces, buy supplies, and keep the business, per se, self-funding.
So this is not like a Capstone project? This is an ongoing that'll continue year after year after year?
This is, yes. And I believe they're going to use the Buzz Stop Cafe. Buzz Stop, it was called Cafe. But the Buzz Stop plays also to sell additional merchandise. The hope is that once this Capstone project gets it off the ground, that it would continue on thereafter.
So currently, it's a start for a capstone and then make become permanent, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Melissa, continue. Jack, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm still not sure where the profit's going. I mean, I understand it's going to be reinvested, but eventually, there's going to be a profit. And, you know, who gets that? Does it go back to the school? You know?
Yes, certainly, you know, it would go back into the programming. It could also maybe support other Capstone projects. You know, we wouldn't use it for anything outside of things that are specific to students and their needs via this course or any other Capstone course.
All right, thank you.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia, just a comment on Jack's, you know, concerns.
Wait till we get through everybody first?
What?
Wait till we get through all board members?
You keep going out, Michelle. So I don't, I can't hear who's saying what. It's just going blank to me, so.
Circle back to you.
Fine. That's fine.
Melissa, continue.
It's Michelle De Lucia, next.
No questions.
All right. So-
Lisa?
Lisa.
Okay. I had just was commenting back on Jack's. Just keep us abreast of what's going on. Just let us know if the profit tends to be in one area. Just keep us informed, you know, whether it goes to one account and it's going to address this area of the school, whether it be, I don't know, whatever you choose to have it go towards. But just keep us abreast of what's going on. I think that will alleviate some of our concerns and, you know, Jack's concerns, my concerns, everyone's concerns. It's all informational. Just keep us informed, that's all.
So are there any other questions? Follow-up questions, comments? If not, Melissa, I'll ask you to do a roll call vote.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer, oh, sorry. Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
Okay. One no, motion carries.
7.8, Discussion and Possible Action on the Board of Education Involvement in the District Curriculum Advisory Council. Jen, do you want to give us a little background on this?
I am looking forward to sharing with you. If you have in your packet, it is under 7.8. But if it is helpful, I am also happy to share a-
I can screen share if you'd like.
That would be wonderful. So just in the interest of transparency and in supporting our, you know, given the importance of curriculum instruction and assessment to the overall mission of the board, I'm proposing at this time that the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, that's myself and our instructional leadership team, family community engagement, we would set aside some time quarterly for a Curriculum Advisory Council. And we could meet more as needed. But this council would be a body made up of interested family members, faculty, students where appropriate, and administration. I'd love to have members of the board be involved and to be appointed or to be, you know, selected or volunteer to serve on the council. The purpose is to increase transparency and improve communication between faculty, staff, the board, and the community at large. There's many initiatives and actions that we are engaged in to continuously improve teaching. And, you know, being able to make that visible and share that with our community and our board is something that I think would benefit all students and stakeholders and frankly, taxpayers in East Haven. So the functions could be, you know, reviewing documentation. So we have a curricular resource adoption protocol. Anytime a new textbook or resource is selected, we have a process for vetting. And those, you know, incur written documents that could be reviewed by this body. We have data relative to student achievement that we may examine at a regular basis, project implementation, status updates, and examining, you know, any kind of review of curriculum revision project status. And I just think it's a value to stay up to date with any district initiatives designed to support all of the improvement in teaching and learning in our cycles of continuous improvement. Everybody's working really hard to reflect and think and improve. So the duties of the members of this committee would be responsible for attending meetings, asking and answering questions. And where appropriate, we may ask those members of the committee to provide insight on items related to curriculum and instruction that would require board action. So we do offer workshops periodically, but this would be a systemic, ongoing, regular opportunity for those members who would be inclined to do so, to be involved in the process. And so I leave it to your discretion as to whether that's something that you would be inclined to participate in. Michelle, I think you're muted.
Jen, as we discussed, any board member could attend at any time, though, correct?
Correct. And we could make these agendas available. And if members of the public would be inclined to as well, I would like them to be very open and transparent.
And the projected date for the first?
I was thinking December 8th would be a good time to start. But once the committee would get on board, we could look at quarterly dates that would match the calendar.
Okay, so it's a quarterly meeting council? Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion?
Tia De Palma? I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the District Curriculum Advisory Council.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I will second it.
Okay. Melissa, have you got to roll call for questions and comments?
Okay. Tia De Palma?
I think it sounds wonderful. I think it's right up my alley. Something I would definitely love to take part in. And I think it's a really good thing. And it, you know, it answers the questions of curriculum that always come up And it, you know, it answers the questions of curriculum that always come up, that we just, you know, we stopped having like a separate committee for this. This would definitely be an asset and move us forward in that.
Thank you.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia.
Yes, and I too also would like to be involved and be part of the committee. Jen, thank you very much.
Welcome, you, thank you.
Tom Hennessy. Tom Hennessy.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Tom Murtaugh.
I think it's a fantastic idea to do, and if you need any extra help, let me know.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Pellegrino.
I also think it's a great idea.
Erica Santiago.
No questions, thank you.
And Michelle Delucia.
No questions. Oh, we forgot, did you forget Jack?
Did I? I'm sorry. Jack Stacy, sorry.
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. Jen, I, I think anything that will help with transparency and communication with the community, and I think that goes along with what we talked about in our goals on the last meeting, and that was for more transparency and more communication. So I think it's a fantastic idea. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, Melissa, at this time, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call vote.
All right, and I will not forget Jack. All right. Tia De Palma.
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia.
Yes.
Tom Hennessy.
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh.
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Yes.
Erica Santiago.
Yes.
Jack Stacy.
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
So at this time, I would like to add Agenda Item 7.9, discussion and possible action on strategy to support our students and staff during the COVID pandemic.
Second, I, Tia De Palma, I second that.
Any questions or comments, or do we go right to a roll call vote to add the agenda item? This is not to discuss the agenda item. I remind you, it is just to add the agenda item. So Melissa, could you just do a roll call vote to add the agenda item?
Yes. Tia De Palma.
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia.
Yes.
Tom Hennessy.
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh.
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Yes.
Erica Santiago.
Yes.
Jack Stacy.
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia.
Yes. Okay, so discussion and possible action on strategies to support our students and staff during the pandemic. Basically, I got a chance, I was speaking with Tia over the weekend, and, you know, she's a teacher, and I've spoken to a few other teachers, and we're trying to think of a way to help alleviate the stress on both our students and staff during this time. In thinking about the MAU that we do have in an agreement about allowing teachers' time on Fridays to just catch up with Google Classroom and connect with online students. Our online number is growing, and I just want to see where everybody's thoughts are on this. I, I was thinking possibly a half-day for students only on Fridays after the Thanksgiving, starting after the Thanksgiving on holiday, but only on weeks that are full calendar weeks. So that's just where I'm thinking, but I'd love to hear what everyone else has to say.
So would we need to make a motion, and perhaps would it be like a calendar change or something? Or do we just want to, I don't know how to word, you know, where is that?
That's why I'm kind of trying to get brainstorm here with everybody on the board to see where they stand and what they want to do. That's just my thought, so we need to, you know, come to a consensus.
Do you want me to roll call for comments?
Yes.
Okay. Tia De Palma.
Um, I'm not going to lie, I, I am a teacher. I'm not, teach full-time. I have, every class I teach is, is live-streamed. I have some, more than others in some classes. I've been teaching for a very, very long time. I still love my job, which is why I'm not leaving quite yet, but I am very, very stressed. I see my principals stressed, and we have good people. We have good people in East Haven. I've talked to teachers, some teachers in East Haven as well, and, and I'm sure the principals. We do a lot of, they do, they have a huge job to, to help with the contact, contact tracing, and the principals themselves. We still have goals. We still have, we have to be prepared to go remote at any given time. I think that we're lucky. I, that plan that Jen, Mary shared was phenomenal, but in a given day, we are, I'm not, I'm going to, I'll speak for myself, and this is where it just started, just to be a conversation. I'm, I'm really tired. There's days I could just, I, I have, I'm driven. I know many teachers are too, and it's just, you need some time. You need some time to make sure that you're putting out there for the kids, that you are giving them your best work that you can give them, and still be there as, as a person for, for those children, and be able to do your job and feel like you are doing, you know, making it worthy for the, for, for the kids. And, and I think it's very much needed, and I, I, I could be on the verge of tears all the time, and it's not be, I put pressure on myself, I'm sure I do, so this isn't just about me, though. If I'm feeling this way, I, I can't imagine others aren't, and I know they are, because I, I ask and I see it. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I think that it should be, you know, we have to make sure we are ready, and it should be maybe a half-day. Maybe you want to meet with kids after a small group virtually, or maybe you need to do some work that, that you just can't get done. You need to plan and be ready for that remote class, or the kids that aren't getting it, or whatever it is that your principals, and you can come together and put, do some work that needs to be done, and you can clear your head and get ready to go. I like your idea, Michelle, about Friday, I guess. We already kind of have something in place, so I, I think it just makes good sense, and I don't mean, this isn't about me, but I'm just trying to show empathy and feel for everybody that's involved. Principals, I mean, I don't know, I, I just happened to see on Facebook some principals calling their parents, checking on the kids, et cetera. It just seems like a really wonderful, something that we need to just consider. Thank you. Sorry, I took a little long.
Okay.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia.
No, I think it's just a contradiction how we can go from that. I mean, we've been asking for, whether it be hybrid or some opportunity to have some, you know, relief and not have the numbers all, you know, so high in one place, in one location. We've been back and forth, and now we're talking about half-days. I just think it's a contradiction. No for me.
Okay, Tom Hennessy.
I think our students need to be with our teachers more, not less.
No, at this time, it's, I'm kind of looking for any ideas from everybody. It's not just to go over mine. So any input that any of them might have, this would be a great time to give it.
What's that?
I'm not really looking for just my idea. That's just kind of what I came up with. I'm trying to see if any board members have any input or anything to add to this.
I'm good with the way things are.
Okay.
I just don't really understand, maybe me being, being naive, alleviating the stress. Do you want it for the students? Do you want it for the teachers? Do you want it for like a study session for extra help? I'm not quite sure where you're going.
Both. It would give both the students and the staff time, but, you know, most importantly, I, I am worried about the staff. I am worried about the pressure to get everything done, to be ready, because they pretty much are teaching online and in person. They're, they're pretty much doing two roles with full online learning, and with our fully online remote learners, they're, they do need a little bit, I think, more guidance, and I would allow the teachers to plan for this. Just to get started, this is something that is in MAU that will happen once we do go, or if we do go full remote, we will be having half-day Fridays. That's why I suggested Friday to stay, you know, on calendar. But like I said, I'm hoping to get other input. I can't be the only one that has ideas.
So, Michelle.
So, I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask Bob to share, because we've been talking about this a lot, and we've come up with some strategies, and Bob done some, some great work in this area just, just this week. So Bob, do you want to share?
Yeah, sure. So we've been, you know, it's, we appreciate how hard our teachers have been working, and recognize it, and recognize the importance of keeping our kids in school. So one of the things we're considering, and what we started to consider a couple of weeks ago, and Erica and I had a discussion about it, and Jennifer and I had a discussion about it, was supporting them. So a couple of the things we did, and it's actually quietly happened already, is we brought an emotional support therapy dog in to one of our schools to greet our teachers as they entered in the morning. See, I know it seems a little corny, right, but it's one of those things that, you know, you reach out to people, and that's sometimes just enough. I'm also working, we're also working through this office with a former colleague who actually had been in district, and I've been back and forth with her. She does a lot in the world of, you know, a lot of the world of meditation and calming and centering work for adults out in the community in East Haven. Pretty, pretty well-known social worker named, her former name was Cara Perno. It's Cara Seneca now. She's a terrific young lady. Many of you will probably remember her. So Cara and I are trying to work on another opportunity for teachers, again, on their own time, to, to work with and relieve some of the stress that our staff is feeling, and also, again, recognize their hard work. We're going to continue to do that. The only really oddball thing that you might see me do, I, I spoke to a, a young woman out of Quinnipiac University who works with miniature therapy ponies. Tom, don't burst out laughing. Come on, I know you want to, my friend. So miniature therapy ponies, which I think I have the space for at J M S and East Haven High School, and I'm considering, we're considering that also, if I can get my superintendent's permission, maybe considering that also onsite to greet staff as they arrive. Again, a little, little out of the ordinary, but again, recognizing the work of our, our faculty. I think it would go a long way, and I think it does go a long way, if each one of us that's in a leadership role talks to our staff and continues to recognize and support their, their accomplishments and their efforts during this time, because they all, many of them all have children as well, who they're trying to support at home, and many of them are somebody's child. So if we could just be mindful of that, as well as mindful of the fact that we got to keep grinding, all right, this is, this is hard work, and it's going to continue to be hard work for a long time. As I've said to some of my colleagues, this is this generation's Normandy moment. The great generation landed on Normandy. This is our Normandy moment. So take a few minutes, reflect on that, and recognize that that's the kind of work that we have to do right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Melissa, do you want to continue, following board members?
Yes, I think we left off with Tom Murtaugh. So Mary Ann Pellegrino.
First, first of all, I, I worked with Cara that Bob referred to, and there is no greater person to say that it's to work, to talk about doing something like this. And also, I only teach part-time. I only teach a little bit, and it is twice, at least twice. And that's, my class is totally remote. To, to prepare and conduct a totally remote class than it was to conduct the same class in person. I can't, I just can't envision being, doing this full-time. Of course, you know, it's, it's just, it would just blow my mind. And I think there's nothing wrong with trying to support the teachers that are doing this. They are doing a wonderful job. They're, it's, it's work that's above and beyond that they never thought they were going to have to do. You can't prepare for a class remotely that you, the same way that you, you prepare for a class in person. It, it takes a whole different skill set, and I think that any kind of help you can give them is, is, is needed, is, is wonderful. As half a day, good, even if sometimes they don't do PD-type things. They do, they do just sit around and have a cup of coffee and talk to each other and cry on each other's shoulders. That, that, it would just, it would be good for the kids. It, it would definitely be good for the kids, because the teachers would be more mentally healthy. That's all I have to say.
Erica Santiago.
I think, so I have a, a couple of different perspectives that I want to look at this. In the medical, in the medical field, I feel like I have a different perspective, because I have multiple roles that I've been, that have been added on to my daily duties. Just, just my normal workflow, and then the, the additional workloads that have been added on. I can, I can look at it in a teacher's perspective, knowing that their daily role and the added stress that's been added on to their daily, their daily tasks. So I can see where their daily stress have definitely, you know, definitely been challenging. You know, added on to just the masks and, you know, just the, the added PPE and things to that nature. So I can definitely empathize with them, you know, to that aspect. Bob, definitely the, you know, the, having the, the, the therapy dog come in and the things like that. Last week, Yale did have Reiki come in. We had therapy sessions come in, and they gave us like spa sessions and things like that. I can assure you, that is absolutely appreciated, and it is necessary. And as horrible as it is to say this, I'm going to tell you from the most honest point of view, the minute it leaves, those stressors are right back there. You are right back in your role. It switches off in a minute, and you need to put your professional face back on, and you need to get right back into that session. It is nice, because it's, it, it takes that, it takes that, that mask off for the second, you know, so to speak, and you're able to, you know, take that minute session away. You, you get to meditate for that. You're, you're there for that moment, and you're able to relax for that moment. But when, when you're back in that classroom, your role, you're back in your role. So I want to say, you know, to, you have to put that, you have to put yourself in that situation, whereas you're, you know, I want to say for the teachers, it's absolutely appreciated. I know, like, and I think that we, we definitely need to still do those things where, you know, we need to let them know how appreciated they are, but I definitely think, I, I feel, I feel, Michelle, that the half-day on Friday, I think, I think, I think at this point, it's going to be necessary, whether they want to use it for a prep time, whether they want to use it for, just to get back on track, just to get themselves back into their, wherever they need to refocus and get, you know, mentally get themselves back on whatever they need to do. I think, I think that's where we need to be, just to get themselves, so they can refocus and just be them best, their best selves, just because I think that's what we need to do, just so they can, just so our kids, our kids deserve to have them be their best selves. That's all.
Jack Stacy.
Yes, thank you. So as a former educator, and, and believe me, I know I got out just at the right time. So as a former educator, and, and believe me, I know I got out just at the right time. And I am in, still in communications with a number of teachers, both in district and out of districts. And I know the stress that they're under. And Michelle, to talk about your plan, for 10 of the 15 years that I was at high school in the community, we were a half-day-on-Friday school. One thing it led to was getting a lot of kids because they loved getting out on a half-day on Friday. But what you have to understand is the teachers didn't go home. And there was so much that we were able to accomplish in that half-day on a Friday. You know, some of the things we would either meet as a, as a old faculty, and it was a smaller school, but we also would break out into department meetings. We also had time in which we could discuss what was working with particular students. If a teacher was having a problem with someone. There's just so much that can be done. And there were days when we were asked to make phone calls home, communicate with the parents. It was, it was a great time to call and to contact parents. So, you know, you're not, it's not a lot of time to think about it if you want to start this right after Thanksgiving. But I think the plan that you proposed is right in line with what I did for 10 out of the 15 years I was at HSC. And I think it's a great idea. You know, I would throw in no homework on Fridays for students, but that's just me. Let them off the hook too, let them have a good weekend. But that's neither here nor there. But I like your plan and, and I think it could work. And I think it would be in the best interest of both students and staff.
And Michelle Delucia? You're muted.
I, I only made the suggestion just as an idea of what we could do to help support our staff during this difficult time, as well as, as everyone said, make sure our students are getting the best possible education that they can by having a well-rested, prepared staff. In no way does this contradict the district's decision to stay full in-person with everyone having the option to go full remote. This is just to ensure that our teachers have more time to prepare, to touch base with those remote learners. Again, if someone else has another idea on how to support our staff and students, I, I am more to open. And Bob, I just wanted to know, do we get to name the pony? And are we gonna see pictures?
I, I have pictures of Nutmeg the Dog at Mamawwin. A few that Diane sent me. I don't have any, I'll have some more of, the dog is at, Nutmeg is at Ferrara on Friday. So, yeah, I don't think you get to name the pony. I think the pony has a name. You can get a picture with the pony.
All right, um, okay.
I think it's awesome. I would love to see that dog.
And may I add, Michelle, I think one of the actions that we're engaging in as a leadership team, and I've spoken with many of our teachers, is trying to work on, you know, helping teachers prioritize and focusing our communication to ensure that it's clear and easy to understand. I think so much can be very overwhelming at this time. And so I encourage, you know, our teachers to reach out and, and seek additional clarity. I've, I've heard from a lot of people, and, and you're right, they are struggling with sort of designing learning in different modalities. And, and we're really working with our teams to make sure the meeting time and the professional development time is meaningful. And I, part of what we are asking, we'll be sending a staff survey out this week, which will help us and I can, we can bring back to the board any concrete ideas that result from that opportunity for teachers to give feedback as well.
Thank you. Again, this was just to get this conversation started. I, I just think that it, it is important to discuss what, what's going on. So.
Michelle?
Yes.
I, if I may, Tia De Palma, there's also the consideration of, um, what, um, you know, the, the, this is all about empathy. It's all about, you know, there's a big push for the social-emotional learning of the children, for the children. I have to tell you, there's a high rate of absenteeism in the schools, whether it's COVID-related or not. But when you have, you know, one day you have three kids out, the next day, summer back, you have two different ones out. And every child has a different learning style and you want to meet the needs of each and every individual child. So it's, it, it is very difficult to, to look at that and to, to be able to meet those needs. It's, it, there's so many needs that are met. But when you're dealing with staff, when there's 12 teachers out, 12 staff people, it's, you can't even, you get through the day, you're like, okay, we can stop here now. And then work on all the things, you know, grading, report cards, everything that just piles up. It, it really is never-ending. And you, you're facing children all day. You, you want to be your best. You don't want things to be, oh, smart board didn't work, okay, what's Plan B? You know, I have three computers sometimes, just going from one to the other. If this doesn't work, we put, we open up the, the next one. I don't know, you know, it's nice to have a second body in the room. I don't know what the availability for that is. But there are just so many factors. It's, it's not the only thing. I love all the things Bob mentioned, I think. And I, I happen to go way back with Cara Seneca. I know her well, and I don't know her recently. I haven't seen her in many, many, many years. But, um, I, I gotta say that, um, I'm, I'm, I just think we gotta use our heads and not, not just say, okay, you're done here. Maybe they need one hour to take a breath and just relax. Or maybe they want to use that time to go back and meet with different groups of children. There's so, virtually, and there's so many things that could be utilized. But just to catch your breath and to make sure that you're ready for that next week. That's why I loved when you, you mentioned like, you know, and it's, it's a half a day at school. You know, it, it's not, the kids are still gonna get some, you know, school, they're gonna be educated. But you're just, you know, you can, you're still face-to-face with them. But you're giving the kids to recharge and get ready for the next week.
Yeah.
You know?
Saying for the teachers to leave at half a day, but just to give them.
Right, the teachers aren't leaving, the children are.
Yeah.
Right, that's what you meant?
Again, it's just an idea. Again, I, I'd like to hear any ideas that every, everyone has. This is just for discussion. I mean, if somebody wants to make any motion, they can. Jack, yes?
No, just, uh, just wanted to add one thing. This would be all right with the bus company, correct? I mean, we wouldn't have a conflict with the bus company and transportation.
No, we would just, we, like, we make calendar changes sometime, we would just notify them. You know, I think a few of you alluded to this, but I think, you know, educators and staff members, we're, we're hard on them ourselves, right? And their teachers are hard on themselves. I think we have to help them recognize that they are doing an amazing job. They have stepped up to the plate, swung hard and are hitting home runs. They've stretched their capacity, you know, physically and mentally, and also their expertise. And they're doing great. I know it's, it's challenging because you always want to do better. But I think, you know, in listening to this, we have to find ways for them to also internalize and recognize that the work they are doing is really, really great.
I agree. Michelle, Erica Santiago, if I may, if everyone's done, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Can I just, Erica, I'm sorry, can I clarify one thing? Michelle, when you opened up your idea, you stated on full weeks?
On full weeks.
So that's a week where there's five full days, no early dismissal days relative to PD or report card conferences or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make sure that my motion reflects that.
I'm, I'm actually not done. Everyone's speaking on a turn, I'm gonna speak now, is that fine, Michelle?
Oh, Lisa, you want to speak?
Yes, please.
You're frozen.
No, thank you. I think this is amazing. I think any, any type of reinforcement regarding any kind of positive thinking, whether you're using animals, any kind of, you know, anything, positive reinforcement is, is key and it's a powerful piece. But I think we're still missing the piece of the child and the parent and the families and getting to them, reaching them. I think that, I know from my own experience that the teachers are doing an amazing job. Not only the teachers, the, the counselors, the mental health, they're pulling together when the child is in need, in my experience. But I also know in other experiences, not the case. And I, and I also know that we have to find a way, all these positive things you're talking about, to reinforce the teachers and giving them good cookies and all this good stuff, which is so important. Really? Which is so important. But the issue that I have is that I don't think we're reaching the families. And I think that's important. Because if we were, guys, no disrespect, but you wouldn't be getting 10 calls a day. This one won't be getting 10 calls a day. I wouldn't be getting 10 calls a day. We have to find something, whether it's a reinforcement, whether it's an informational piece that goes out twice a week. And there's a, there's a Zoom link that you can click on twice a week to show some video on how we can use tools at home. Tools at home, maybe like some motivational techniques. I know about motivational interviewing, motivational reinforcement, so whatever. My point is that we have to find a way to reach our families. I think that what you're saying is amazing. Believe me, I think it's amazing. I know they're doing a great job. I think, Tia, you're doing a great job as an educator. Mary Ann, Jack, you as well in the past, Michelle, Erica, Jen, Eric, the other Erica, Laura, Anthony, everyone on the screen, amazing. I know you're giving 100%, but I also know that we're missing a little bit of a piece because we were not missing that piece, we wouldn't be getting as many out calls, outreach to, to us. So we have to find a way. We have to find something.
But our whole meeting tonight, Lee.
What's that?
I'm, I don't mean to interrupt, I'll wait.
Go ahead. I just said I don't think we're, we're, we're missing something. You all may disagree, but I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying we're not. This is just a way of reaching out so we can better ourselves. And, and we have to look at, um, I mean, this is a pandemic, we know that. And everybody, look at, look at the nurses, look at all the people that work in the health field that are non-stop, all day long, they're essential workers. I, I totally get that and I respect them wholeheartedly. I'm just, we were just talking, a better, you know, we can even give time for teachers to, to maybe reach out to more parents and children. We're ju, we can't do everything. We, we just talked a lot about, on our agenda, about things that are, will help the families as well. I think it's, we're doing.
But nothing's happening yet, nothing's happening. We need to, we need to, we need to be.
I, I think that you're, you know, you're saying that.
Does it help when we go back and forth, point of order? I'm gonna, you make final comments?
I thank you for that. I just hope everyone's listening to what I'm saying and we could find something. I have a lot of data. I'm sure Jen has the data. And I think that we can come together and figure something out. Jen, I'm gonna reach out to you with some of the tools I have and maybe you can really, you know, bring it out to the parents. I thank you for everything that you're doing.
I think we're off topic here, right?
Are we off topic?
No, we're not.
We're not.
I mean, again, if any board members ever want to, you know, maybe add an agenda item to the regular agenda or, you know, have any thoughts that they want to short, please, we'll make, I'll make sure it gets on the agenda, get all the information that you need to go over your idea or whatever you want to talk about, just let us know. All right, so at this time, Melissa, do we have a motion?
Yes, Michelle, Erica Santiago, I'd like to make a motion to adjust the school day calendar to include half-days on Fridays for students only during full, full school weeks, beginning after the Thanksgiving holiday.
Jack Stacy, I'll second that.
All right, so at this time, Melissa, if you want to do, we'll call for comments on that motion, please do.
For comments, Tia De Palma?
I would think that we just need to, oop, I did it again.
No, you're.
I'm sorry. To clarify, um, I don't know, the parameters, you know, I guess that should come from the superintendent and the, the administration about, you know, what that time would be used for. It's not just, you know, we're not, right, Michelle?
Yeah, no, it's still work, but it's just giving them time to prepare and reach out and support.
And we can, you know, we can make arrangements to, to collaborate with teachers on what will be useful.
Yeah.
With them during their time. But is this every Friday from now until the end of the school year? Is this every Friday on full weeks for the next three months?
The, the motion was on full calendar weeks.
Right, but is it for the rest of the school year, all the way through June? Is there a length of time? I don't, I don't recall any discussion on a length of time.
I don't know how to do that. I think maybe, um, until decided, I, I don't.
Does it depend?
I don't know.
If we go remote, if we go full remote, is there a plan for Fridays in there?
It's the same plan.
Pardon?
It's the same plan for Fridays if we go full remote.
So will it be all the way while we're in a full in-person model with a remote option until obviously we go full remote or a hybrid, which it's built in there anyway?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't foresee this.
And just, just one additional question. Starting December 4th, I'm assuming, which is the, the week after November break, does that give parents enough time to, to adjust and plan? And are we going, am I, is the board requesting that I bring a calendar back that outlines every single one of these early dismissal days at the next board meeting?
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Do we, is it worth our while to adjust it and say the next like two months of school or something? Three months? Just to see if it, maybe it's something that won't work or maybe it's?
Maybe until the beginning of March? I, I honestly don't know. I just brought this up as, as a thought. Did you know?
Michelle, I know you did, but my question is, we're not following the plan as it is and everyone can attest to that. So how are we altering it? Like if it's altered, make sure it's cut, the plan that was put out by our superintendent, we're not following it at all.
Yes, I don't understand.
Nope. We're not following it at all. Okay, so my point is, Michelle's, we, we need to alter accordingly because.
If you remember last meeting, we actually shared the new memo from the state that was released October 20th, 2020, on revising on how to decide what level you're gonna be in and changing plans. So there is no hard, fast number on plans, I guess. Are you mean on options that we put together? I think the state put that out, that for every district to reconsider going by their local health department?
Exactly. We are on our plan. We are on the plan that's recommended from the state. And, and you can't say we, we weren't.
Numbers might as well not to.
Excuse me, you're interrupting.
Point of order, point of order, we're off topic. We have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
Yeah, let's go back to that.
Well, it's, if this isn't about that motion, then we're just gonna put it off.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Can I make a suggestion? Could the board only approve the Fridays leading up to the next board meeting? At which point I will be, bring a revised calendar to you that you can approve after?
Yes, that sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
When's our next board meeting?
December 8th.
Which, so, so you're talking about the 4th, making the 4th an early dismissal day? On the 8th, I will bring a revised calendar to you with Fridays. That week happens to be a week where there's two early dismissal days for parent report card conferences. I'm assuming that we're not gonna add a third early dismissal day.
You know what, why don't we wait to start after the December 8th meeting?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. So bring back a revised calendar for, um, I got it.
With the plan to start, I guess, with the projected, you're starting December 11th.
On the 18th.
Or isn't the 11th a Friday?
Yeah, but is that gonna give people enough?
No, you're right.
Time?
Well, that's why we should decide tonight, baby, if we are gonna start on the 11th.
The 11th would be three half-days in a row because there's report card conferences.
So I believe, I think we should start in January.
So there's conferences both weeks?
The 11th is the Friday of that week. There's conferences on the 9th and 10th.
And on the December 4th week?
No, that's a full week. That's why I was saying if the board wanted to do an early dismissal, on, on Friday, we can get communication out to parents and then on, that's the 4th. And then on. we can get communication out to parents and then on, that's the fourth, and then on the eighth, I bring a revised calendar to you that starts the next full week Friday on the 18th.
I'm sorry, I thought that you meant that the week of the fourth, there were half days.
No. Melissa, can you pull up a school calendar for me from our district?
I'm thinking we should just, I don't know, do we have to start?
Oh, yeah.
Right now?
No.
Again.
I just wanna make sure that.
Michelle, I think it's gonna, I think we should really postpone until we're all on the same page because I think that it's not a bad idea at all, but I also know that this is just, everyone's not on the same page and I think making a decision like this is just not, not fair to not only the staff, but to everyone. Us.
Everyone. It's just.
Thank you.
And equal to everyone else's ideas.
So here on the.
The motion's already on the floor, guys.
It is.
Okay, so the original motion was to do every Friday of a full week, starting the week after Thanksgiving. Puts you a half day on the fourth and a half day on the 18th.
Yes.
And if you move into January, it's a half day on the eighth, the 15th and the 29th. Then it's a half day on February, what is that, 26th? Then March 12th and 26th. And then April 9th, 23rd and 30th. 14th, 28th, the 4th and the 11th. My suggestion was if the board just wanted to do, we don't, I don't have a calendar for you to vote on tonight.
Right.
So, you know, I, I'm just trying to balance this idea where if you wanna take action on something, I get it, but give me a chance on the eighth of December to bring back a revised calendar that you approve, because the board does approve the school calendar. That has this communicated out through the remainder of the year or whatever duration the board deems appropriate.
We could always say the motion is for the superintendent to develop a half day calendar for full weeks for the rest of the year or something like that.
And then, then we approve it at the next, or not, at the next meeting?
Yes, we approve it at the next meeting. So the fourth is out. It would be a full day on the fourth.
Yes, and this way we would just make a motion for you to bring the calendar.
Got it. That would be, that would be, I think that would be more appropriate.
I agree.
That sounds good.
So Erica needs to amend her motion.
Erica? You wanna amend your motion, um, to be approved, the superintendent to develop a calendar reflecting half day Fridays on full calendar weeks?
So I amend my motion to, for the superintendent to approve the calendar. I'm sorry, to.
Design a calendar, yeah.
What, what, Tia?
Perhaps design a calendar showing a possible future half days on Fridays of full weeks of school.
Correct. And then also just, I would just be advised to, um, for the weeks that are conferences, I would, you know, I would just, I would just be cautious on which, because the calendar doesn't show like, one week, it could be just middle school that it's, you know, it looks, you know what I mean? Like this week, it shows that there's half days, um, for two days, but it's really just middle school, not elementary.
Right, but if we put a half day on Friday, are you saying not make it for the middle school, but all the other schools?
No, I would just make sure that it's a half day district, you know what I'm saying? If we're gonna do half days, I would just make sure it's like a district wide half, you know what I mean? Let's just make sure.
A district wide half day on a complete full week.
Right, exactly.
I gotcha.
Okay, I second Erica's motion.
Across the court.
So Melissa, you want to do a roll call vote on the motion?
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Lisa Jurice and Anastasia?
No.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes, to be discussed later.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Two noes, motion carries.
Okay, so at this time, that brings us to the end of our meeting.
I, Michelle, I'd like to add an agenda item if possible. Um, discussion impossible action on the secretary wellness MOU.
I make a motion to add 7.10. Discussion possible action to approve the secretary contract and MOU.
Correct.
Second that motion, Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Okay, the motion 7.10 to just, um, discussion impossible action on approval of the secretary's union MOU. Erica?
Yes, so this is the MOU that extends the deadline for the one percent, um, premium cost share.
Erica, I'm sorry, we didn't do a vote on adding it.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I, I apologize.
So Tia De Palma, yes, to add the, add the motion.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Lisa Jurice and Anastasia?
No.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Two noes, motion carries.
Okay, so 7.10, discussion impossible action on approval of the secretary's contract MOU.
Yes, so this is just an MOU extending the deadline from December 31st, 2020 to March 31st, 2021. For them to meet the criteria for the wellness program for the one percent cost share reduction.
Any questions or comments? Melissa, you wanna do a roll call?
No, we gotta make a motion now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'll make the motion to, um, extend the, well, the MOU to extend the contract or to move it to March 31st for the, um. Help me. Um, I have nothing written in front of me.
Secretary's contract.
This, well, did I say it? The MOU for the secretary's contract? Is, and you moved a date to, from something to March 31st? Erica, 40, did I say it incorrectly?
I, yes, just extending the date from December 31st, 2020.
December 31st, 2020.
2021.
To, to, to March 31st, 2021.
Yep.
Jack Stacy, I'll second that.
Okay, so I believe we discussed this in subcommittee. It's just so they could get their, um, physicals done so they can have their wellness credit. Am I correct? So yes, doctor's appointments, right? Is that what it is?
Yes, to give them a critical time under these circumstances when it's hard to get appointments to meet all the criteria of the wellness program. To be awarded the one percent reduction on their premium cost share contribution for health insurance.
Great. Melissa, could you roll call for comments or questions, please?
Yes.
Uh, Tia De Palma?
No. I mean, no comments.
Lisa Jurice and Anastasia?
Comment.
Tom Hennessy?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Tom Murtaugh?
No question.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
No questions.
Erica Santiago?
No questions, thank you.
Jack Stacy?
No questions.
And Michelle Delucia?
No questions.
Okay, so vote. Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
Roll vote. Uh, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Lisa Jurice and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
No.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Okay, one no, motion carries.
Okay, so that, anything, anything else? Now that brings us to the end of our meeting. Um, I ask that you.
Sorry, I have one more thing, Michelle. I do apologize. It would be 7.11 at this point, I think. Um, and it is discussion impossible action on the East Haven High School audio upgrade in the gymnasium.
So I make a motion to add 7.11. Tia De Palma?
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I second adding the mo, adding the item to the agenda.
Okay.
Vote for the, to add to the agenda?
Yeah, then we just, we just voted, you know, or, oh, yeah, we have to vote.
Vote to add it, right?
Yeah, we just have to vote. So I'm a yes.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Lisa Jurice and Anastasia?
You hear me? Yes.
Yeah, no, I got you now. Thanks. Um, Tom Hennessy?
What, 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 what stage is this?
We're add, we're just adding it to the.
Oh, no.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, two noes, uh, motion carries.
7.11, discussion impossible action on, I, I'm sorry, that's the only reason I said no. I'm not even exactly sure what this, what this agenda item is.
Um.
Got it.
Possible action on the East Haven High School, um, audio upgrade for the gymnasium?
We're just asking to go out to bid, right?
No, actually, I'm asking to you, um, I'm asking the board to approve the HB Communications contract that is on the state contract, state contract number SO 19114, to conduct the upgrade using Corona relief funds as written and approved by the State Department of Education and the e-grant system.
Okay, thank you.
I, I know we're using grant funds, but I, I don't know what, anything about this.
So Randall, would you mind summarizing for us? We've brought a couple of proposals in the past to the board relative to the upgrade of the audios. I'm gonna have Randall give a little bit of the history and talk a little bit about this proposal.
Sure, I think for, for close to five years, we've explored options to upgrade the audio in the East Haven High School Fieldhouse. Um, we've had a number of proposals from a number of vendors. Prices ranging from hundreds of thousands of dollars to something more manageable. Um, in March of this year, HB Communications came out and put together a proposal with the idea to, to improve the intelligibility and loudness of, um, both music and broadcast speech in the field house. The proposal, uh, replaced eight loudspeakers, uh, rack mounted amplifiers, included a boot Bluetooth connection to play pregame music, um, and two wireless microphones. Um, at the time, uh, we had no funding to move forward with this project, but in the interest of, of using that space, um, for, for, for both instruction and eating, I think it's appropriate to use funds to upgrade the audio relative to, uh, to safety right now and also, uh, to, to, to use it for, for safety and announcements as we return to, uh, the intended use at some point.
So currently that space is being utilized by students, um, in the morning for breakfast, uh, for instructional space, for meeting space and, uh, for students eating lunch. Um, and I know Randall calls it the field house. I'm referring to it as the East Haven High School Gymnasium. Because we're holding, um, classes and utilizing as a space um, where more than your typical gym class of students would be housed in there. Um, the state approved the use of these funds to upgrade the audio so that it's audible in there should there be an emergency or we need to communicate effectively with staff or students, staff supervising in that area while students are eating or learning. So, um, we're asking for the board's approval tonight, um, and doing that with HB Communications, uh, who is on this, the state contractor list and holds the contract for audio.
And we know that the, uh, the specifics to the, um, what the state bid led, what they are on the state bid list for matches up what exactly we're gonna do. I know we, this has come up before.
Audio and or visual, um, solutions. Hold on, I lost my documents. Um, including camera systems, still or video, analog, digital or optical, sound systems, broadcast communication systems, which is exactly what this is.
No way.
So it covers everything that we're using them for?
No way.
Tom, are you saying it because you think the money should go somewhere else or you're just not happy with it?
Can I have the floor, Michelle?
Yes, you may.
I'm getting nuts over here because why are we adding this to the agenda? In this whole speech, I haven't heard a dollar amount and I'm not approving anything until I see the bid list that they won and they're number one on. This is crazy. How do we vote on things? We haven't heard a dollar amount yet.
Yeah, is it, is this something that we might be able to put, do next, uh, agenda item? That's a really good point. Um, just so we have a little bit more information. Is this something that's urgent? Is this an emergency situation?
Michelle, just so I'm clear, I thought we're just adding it to the agenda. I thought we weren't even, I thought we weren't voting on it. I thought I was just adding it.
Why would we, we're voting on it?
What's that?
Why would we have added it to the agenda if it wasn't gonna be voted on?
I didn't think it was gonna be voted on tonight just for that reason. We didn't, we don't have the information.
Yeah.
Is the, is the packet in the state contract uploaded to the board drive?
Yes.
No way, not tonight.
Yeah, I didn't get the chance to see that. I really didn't know. Is, is, again, is it an emergency situation or is it something that we could approve at another time?
We can wait till the next meeting. That's, that's fine if, you know, I.
I'm just one person. That's just my thought. I'm with Tommy on this.
If we've been working on it since March, why do we have to do it tonight? I still haven't heard a dollar amount. Are you kidding me right now?
We're still in the discussion phases and it's in the board packet and I'll.
How many dollars?
In the.
How many dollars? How much is it?
But there have been several proposals that came through that were.
How much is it?
Very large in, in numbers.
I don't have it.
I haven't, I haven't got a chance to read it. I, I don't want it. Again, I mean, the agenda item's on, I, I mentioned that we tabled this, but.
Forty, forty-one, eighty, forty-one, eighty, forty-one, eighteen.
Great. Can we make a motion to table this item until the next meeting, please?
I second the motion.
Okay, alright, um. Motion tabled. Agenda item tabled. Alright, so is there anything else this evening?
How about a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Erica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, guys. I will see everybody on the eighth. Second, okay, guys. I will see everybody on the 8th.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Do you mind that the December 8th, we'll follow special meeting protocol so there will be nothing added that night of the meeting? So if you wanna add an agenda item, please do so by Thursday, the week prior.
Thank you.
Thank you.